Okay, got it. Welcome to the regular, regular city council meeting of Monday, July 13th, 2020. 2020 is halfway through. Let's hurry up and get this over with. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
(inaudible)
Somebody suggested we have New Year's Eve on Labor Day this week, or this year. I think that's a good idea. Okay, let's start with Billy. That's why you're here. Let's start with Billy Dunlap, who's going to give us an update from Visit York County.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Billy Dunlap. I am president, CEO of Visit York County. Wanted to basically just give you an overview of what we've done over the last year, what we've got going on over the next year, and how we work with the city of Tega K. Tell you a little bit about our purpose, just so you're more familiar with our organization. Our purpose is to develop an authentic unified identity for York County and to promote the long-term development of marketing of York County as a destination. Now tourism is an economic driver. Sustainable tourism creates economic opportunity. Tourism's big business in York County. It creates jobs, it creates economic growth, and it creates development. More visitors equals more hotels, more restaurants, more specialty shops. Showcasing York County to visitors increases the likelihood of relocation. One thing that we've found over the last two and a half years since I've been here is that relocation is a large part of our business, because people come here, they fall in love with it, and they end up moving here. So we find ourselves working with realtors to help in the relocation process. Relocations adds, relocation adds to more development, more rooftops, and more taxes paid. Now, to give you an idea on anticipated tourism growth over the next 24 months, now I'll back up the net in the last 24 months. When I first came here, there were 12 hotels that were going to be built in York County. Those 12, the majority of them have been built. Now we have 10 new hotels that are coming to York County. So over the next 24 months, we will see a 25% increase in hotel rooms. Now, our mission is to create a thriving travel and tourism economy in York County. We do that four different ways. We do it through group tours, meetings and conventions, sports tourism, and leisure travel. Talking specifically about sports tourism, Charlie and I have had some good discussions about the new park coming online. Just to give you an idea on where sports tourism is in York County, last year, $28 million in economic impact through sports tourism. Now, these were events that we were involved with. 93,000 in attendance, 51 sporting events last year, and we recruit events to come to York County on a national level and an international level. Now, marketing and communications is a large part of what we do. That's a large part of how we interact with Tega K. Last year, we had 136 stories published about destinations, interesting people, and things to do in York County. Now, that's us pitching things about York County to local, regional, and national writers to get them to write about it. Give you a prime example, Wendy Hill Orchard and Ciderie in York, we pitched their apple cider donuts to Charlotte Agenda. This was about a month ago, month and a half ago. And when we pitched that, that following Saturday, Wendy Hill sold out of every donut and every thing that they used to make their donuts that they used for an entire year. So in one weekend, they sold all the donuts that they would normally sell in a year. And they thanked us for that article that was in Charlotte Agenda. So that's part of what we do, is pitching ideas. We do it through traditional and digital advertising, SEO, SEM, but we also focus on regional marketing. Now, to give you an idea of where our funding comes from, and you'll see how Tega K plays into this, we are funded through accommodations tax. We get accommodations tax from Rock Hill, Fort Mill, York, and York County. We get hospitality tax funding from Tega K, Clover, and York County. We have 100% participation from municipalities. That was one of my goals when I first came two and a half years ago, was to have 100% participation from municipalities with our mission of bringing more people into York County. We also get revenue from grants, sponsorships, and events, and our destination marketing fee program, which is a way to generate private dollars with agreements with local hotels. Now, to give you an idea on the challenges that we faced over the last two years, in fiscal year 19, this is our funding from York County Council. In fiscal year 19, we received $1.1 million in funding from county council. Last year, that funding was cut to $862,500, which is, was 58% of our budget. Now, the cuts that we got, they were to fund the River Bend project, the new 1,900 acres along the Catawba River. This current fiscal year, we will get cut an additional $400,000. So for this coming year, which actually this year that we're currently in, York County Council will fund 26% of our budget. So we went from 88% to 26% in 24 months. Now, how we impact York County, over the last three years, we have accounted for $72.7 million in economic impact, and that's money spent in York County over the last three years. Now, strategic initiatives that we're working on, the Yoko Taste Trail, I know we have the Shore Club that is a part of the Taste Trail, which the Taste Trail is to us the top 15 dishes in York County. So that is an initiative that caters to locals, but it also caters to tourists and travelers that are coming into York County that want to know where the best place to eat and what are the best dishes. Yoko Brew Trail wildly successful, more so than we ever thought. Right now, we have 2,700 people that are on the Yoko Brew Trail. Our destination marketing fee program, we talked about, Battle of the Rock and MLK Basketball Showcase, two national high school basketball events that we are now a part of. We now have a mobile visitor center that we take out to service visitors on location at events throughout York County. We also do an annual meeting. We're having to cancel our annual meeting this year. It was to be at the Sylvia Theater in downtown York. So we are sad about that, but we look forward to kicking that off again next year. Municipal funding, we've talked about, regional marketing, that we've, we are focusing on several different markets. Raleigh-Durham, Greensboro, Charlotte, Greenville-Spartanburg, Columbia, Asheville. Those are the areas that we focus on mainly for our regional marketing. Road Trip York County, which is a video series that Brianna Francis does for us. One thing that we're working with the arts, with the York County Arts Council is for a cultural trail. It is a trail of humanities-based cultural destinations throughout York County that will be a self-guided tour through our app that will take you all over York County to enjoy the, what the cultural scene is for this, for this area. Also, we're going to be working inside the industry to create a task force to identify hospitality and workforce issues. We know that this was prior to COVID-19. COVID-19 has made this problem even, even, even worse. So we're going to work with our hospitality partners to create a task force on the challenges they face for workforce development, because that is a key area for all of them. Now, services that we've offered to Tega K over the last 12 months, bringing the mobile visitor center out to events, we've included the Glennon Center in our meetings and facilities guide. It is definitely one of the top areas that we promote to meeting planners and event organizers. Tega K also has visibility and brochures distributed to 40,000 visitors annually. We also have a tear-off map of Tega K that's distributed to, at our visitor center, also the welcome center on 77 and area hotels. And then we promote your events, attractions, and restaurants on all of our social media channels, our Visit York County app, and visityorkcounty.com. Now, from a golf perspective, we promote the Tega K Golf Club through the Mountains to Midlands Golf Alliance with the Old English District Golf Guide. We were also proud to sponsor, to help get the inaugural Taste of York County off the ground, and we're looking forward to the next one. We hated that we had to move the one from earlier this year. Yoko Taste Trail, Shore Club, we were excited to have the lobster nachos on there. The Taste Trail started in January of 2020, and we went strong for two whole months. And we were, we had to bring it to a halt, but during that time and since then, since our restaurants are limited back open, we've had 913 users that have signed up for the trail. We've had over 480 check-ins. The Shore Club's had 24 check-ins, and that's basically in about two months. So multiply that over 12, 6,600 page views on our website that goes to the Taste Trail landing page. So the Taste Trail is something that we're still focusing on, and we will continue to focus on. We will continue to work through this the rest of the year, and then we will ramp up with our 2021 Taste Trail. But that is, as a reminder, the top 15 dishes in York County. Now, marketing and communications. Now, we've, Visit York County's produced marketing that has recognized Tega K in various blogs, newsletters, social media posts, app push notifications, and the Yoko Buzz. We featured the Tega K Concert Series, Mr. Putty's Fun Park, Tubing Down the Catawba. I know that is, that is now an issue, and you don't want us to market that. But I can tell you that since January, the tubing section of our website has 11,000 page views. And I think all 11,000 were at the dam this past weekend, is my understanding. And that's something that we are, we are going to work with the municipalities on, because the Catawba is a tourist destination. And, and we've, we've got some work to do to really let it realize its full potential, but also not put, not put things on municipalities that they don't need to have. So tubing down the Catawba is, is a big deal. The Fall Festival, we did a lot of marketing on that. Carolina Ski Show, Mr. Chang's Coffee House, Lake Wiley Brewing Company, Greek Grill, 521 BBQ. We're focusing on the 2020 Tavern opening, and the Model A Brewing Company will be joining the Yoko Brew Trail, which I said earlier, has 2,700 people that are currently on the trail. Yoko Buzz newsletter goes out every Friday morning to 4,300 email subscribers. We promote Tega K events through our event calendar and the Yoko Buzz. That is also a part of the WRHI Morning Show every Friday, and that talks about the top five things to do in York County that, that coming weekend. So during COVID-19, we switched to, from marketing and getting people to come here to supporting our local restaurants and our outdoor spaces. We created hashtag #SupportYorkCounty, which was an open restaurant page, which received more than 22,000 page views just in a two-month period, featuring a full list of open restaurants by town, including Tega K. Because what we found is, we, everyone wanted to know who was doing curbside, who was doing takeout, who was dining in, what the restrictions were for each restaurant. So we put together a comprehensive list for that. And when promoting outdoor activities during COVID-19, Tega K walking trails was a feature for spaces to get outdoors. So our outdoor adventure areas were really thrived over the last few months. Now, talking about hospitality tax funding, Visit York County will continue to invest the hospitality tax funding that we get from Tega K back into Tega K to bring more events, more leisure travel, increase our marketing, increase exposure, promote your events, your attractions, your restaurants. We want to bring more events to the Glennon Center. Done a great job getting that space very usable upstairs. We want to bring the mobile visitor center to as many events as we can, and through social media and all of our channels, we want to increase marketing and promote special events using all of our social media platforms. We appreciate, we thank you for a great year. Tega K supported Visit York County with $8,000 in hospitality tax funding this past year for our organization to assist with bringing events to the area and providing marketing service to the city, and we certainly do appreciate that. And be glad to answer any questions if you've got any.
Anybody have any questions for Billy?
Hey Billy, what is your, is your ask the same this year? Is it?
Actually, we...
Well, I know you have a deficit to fund.
And this was all, and this was all pre-COVID-19. Charlie and I talked maybe in March or February or something like that. But we talked about, what I'm trying to do with all of our municipalities, now that we have 100% participation, is to get to a percentage, because we would like to grow as you grow. So what, what we've requested is 3% of your hospitality tax funding, which based on last year, that would be an additional $342, I think is what, is, is what we looked at. Because what we don't want to have happen is to stick with a dollar figure, and then as you grow, our funding stays the same. We'd like to grow with you. So that is, that is, that is the ask going, going, going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Are you expecting anybody's H-tax to go up this year?
Uh, no, we are not expecting H-tax to go up. Depends on the restaurants you talk to. And we stay in contact with a large percentage of them. Some are, some are above where they were last year, some are equal to where they were last year, and some are below. It just depends on, depends on their setup, depends on whether they can do curbside and takeout easily. But it's, we are, we are working with accommodations tax and hospitality tax. We're working with a moving target over the next 12 months for sure.
All right. Anything else? All right, Billy, thanks. Keep up the good work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Trinity Serenity Point Creek Study by Centerra.
Mayor, while he's getting his things, I want to introduce Rich Mogensen, Mogensen. He is with Centerra as professional wetland scientist, was involved with the study, and he'll take y'all through their report.
I'm going to try to make this as quick as possible. I have a camper waiting for me at the Edisto Beach tonight, so. Anyway, I appreciate you all coming here and listening to this. We were engaged by the town, or the City of Tukay to do a drainage analysis study of a tributary that runs between Placid Court and Calming Way, and has deposited some sediment in a cove. And we did a number of previous review studies of the previous work that's been done, and then we went out and did a comprehensive walkthrough with Tom and Shane and looked at everything, and then we've put this report together, and that's what we're going to listen to this evening. All right, so introduction, I'm Rich Mogensen. I've, I've been doing this for about 30 years. I am a professional wetland scientist. I'm also a general contractor, and I've done a lot of stormwater drainage work in the Charlotte area, Fort Mill and York County, and we've done quite a bit of this over the last five years. And we're seeing more and more of this, by the way. You'll see some of the results from our study are, indicate why these things are happening, but it's not something that's going away. It's something that's going to continue and get worse. All right, so this is what we based our report on, the photos, field observations, and review of historical photos, which proved to be very informative, and then we came up with some conclusions. We'll go ahead and go through that. That's me. There's the coven question, and this is how we came up with our analysis for our report and our conclusions. We did a drainage basin assessment of what's going on in that drainage basin, the types of land use that's going on there, and the effects it's having on that stream channel and the cove in Lake Wiley. We visited the site a couple times. We did a very comprehensive walkthrough with Tom and Shane the first time we went through there, and then came back and did it again. And it's a little hard to see this.
They've got hard copies at their place.
Okay, so you guys can see this. Anyway, that's the, that's your catch basin or small watershed that's draining to the lake. I don't, this, on this kind of screens, these pointers don't work, so I'm not going to be able to do that. But as you can see, down in the cove, there's several reaches, and I'm going to be talking about each one of these reaches for these streams here. So the very first reach called Reach One is the one that is the confluence with Lake Wiley. The next one, which is a problematic reach, is Reach Two. That's just downstream of Stonecrest Boulevard. Just upstream of Stonecrest Boulevard is Reach Three, which is immediately adjacent to the Trinity Point Development, we call BMP or Bus Management Practice. It's called a stormwater basin. Then Reach Four is above that, and each one of these I'm going to talk a little bit about, and we're going to go through it quickly, but at the end, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything. So then Reach Five goes into what we're calling Trinity Pond, which is the little blue spot before the two purple lines go up. The two purple lines are two branches of the top of that tributary. One goes off to the stormwater ponds up by Walmart, and one goes off to the right. And there's also a riprap line swale, and we'll see some pictures of some of this stuff as we go. But I want you to kind of keep this in mind as we go. The reaches are one, then right before Stonecrest is two, right after, or upstream of Stonecrest is three, then four, five, and then six is the stuff up in the woods. All right, that's what I probably should have clicked to. I forgot about. But anyway, you can see this a little bit better. There's our stream reaches, and they have been defined, delineated by using a GPS unit, and so they're pretty accurate as to where those are. And again, it's just best professional judgment as to the differentiation between those reaches, but they were marked with survey mapping equipment. All right, so there's the coven question. You can see, if you look closely, you can see some of the white PVC piping that some of the landowners have put down there to measure the sedimentation over the last few All right, so there's Reach One. It's full of sediment. It's not unusual, this kind of activity in these streams, there's lots of streams that are being buried with sand. We have very sandy soils around here, and due to increased rain events and a lot of development, we're getting a lot more runoff, and in that runoff is sediment. Where's that sediment go? It's got to deposit somewhere. So the reason it deposits right here is because this is where the little stream has the confluence with Lake Wiley, and it slows down. So as it slows down, the sediment drops out. And so this area right in here is overloaded with sediment from upstream sources on, on the stream and outside the floodplain. So there's the, the big broad floodplain. You can see Lake Wiley off in the, in the distance there. We do also have a recommendations memo to the City of Tukay that gives you a kind of an, an options list if you wanted to do some things out there. One of the things that could be done is some work down in this area. It might be problematic, because that's a FEMA mapped floodplain, and one of our suggestions was possibly put up a low berm down in that area there to prevent sediment washing into the creek, but that may be problematic due to the floodplain issues. So that's something that we included in our recommendations memo, but I'm not so sure it's the easiest solution to, to the problems down there in that cove. All right, so the main problem is this reach here. This is Reach Two. We call that incised. In other words, the stream is cut down, and it's eroded, and the stream banks are now vertical, and each rain event, we get sloughing off into that stream, and that's where that sediment gets washed down into Reach One, and then ultimately into the cove. So there's a big source of sediment right upstream of the cove. And if you look closely at that picture, it's a little odd angle, but you see there's two trees. Trees are supposed to be standing like this. Well, these trees are like this. So they're not normal. They're not supposed to be like that. And you can see where they're coming down. They're pulling big chunks of the, of the stream bank with them. And as each one of those trees comes down, big root balls come down too and dump a bunch of sediment in that stream. So there's another big source of that stream, sediment you're seeing in the cove is by trees and just mass wasting, we call it, of the banks there in that section. All right, so now we're up on the other side of Stonecrest Boulevard. We jumped over the Boulevard, and this is what we call Reach Three. You can see the difference between Reach Three and Reach Two. It's like night and day. You can see pattern. We call that pattern profile and dimension of a stream. It's got a nice little meander pattern. It's not incised. You don't see the mass wasting of the banks. It's a totally different stream reach than Reach Two. Now, there is a little bit of sediment in Stream Reach Three, and that comes from the Reach Four, which is, I'm not sure, is it Reach Four or Five? No, Reach Four is directly upstream of Five, and that's got a banks that are unstable and dumping sediment in, and it's stopping right in, in Reach Three. It's, it's not overwhelming it. It's not in really bad shape, but there is some sediment in this reach. All right, so there's the Trinity Point Development, and that's a large BMP that you can see, that was shown on that, the Figure One map that we showed up there. This has a little drainage facility feature right there. That's the outlet to that BMP, and it does, occasionally does get overtopped with these big, big rain events that we're getting, and it does deposit some sediment in that floodplain, and that's that picture on the right. And when we walked through that, that was pointed out to me by Shane, and, and he said, "I'm going to get right on Trinity to clean that up," and I heard tonight that they did indeed cleaned all that stuff up. So that sediment never did reach down to the stream, and that's pulled out of there before it does get down the stream. All right, well, so. All right, so here's Reach Four, which does have some erosion going on. You can see some banks sloughing off there, and that's where a lot of that sediment in Reach Three has, has come from. These banks just kind of go in, and then as water moves down the street, stream, it acts as a gradient or a filter, and the like-sized particles start to move together in slugs, and the finer stuff gets washed away, and the sand starts to move in slugs down the stream. And then it deposits itself, when it gets overwhelmed and the forces can't continue to carry that stream, that sand down the stream, it drops out. All right, Reach Five, this is right just below the Trinity Pond, and it's, it's in relatively good shape. Got good vegetation. It's not that incised. It's not really undergoing downcutting and heavy mass wasting like Reach Two was. So that, this is in not in bad condition. So the, the stream that we're talking about goes through a lot of different characteristics in a very short stretch, and about a mile of stream, you can see four or five different types of stream on this little, little tributary. Pretty interesting. So take the step up. Now we're in Trinity Pond, and I'm talking to Tom and Shane at dinner tonight. We have submitted a quote to Trinity Point to take this impoundment out right here, that impoundment, and lower that pond, and then revegetate that with wetland vegetation and take that pond really out of commission. The problem with that pond right now is that the impoundment or the dam is in bad shape, and Shane just showed me a picture. It's even getting worse as we speak. And if that dam fails totally in a big rain event, there's a lot of sediment that's built up into that pond that, that can move easily downstream and, and can overwhelm that whole system. So it's pretty important to do something with this pond pretty quickly. So Trinity Point is, is acting on that, and they've asked us for a quote to do that. We do consulting, but we also do small construction projects as well, and they've given them a quote to take that impoundment out. So we're working on that. And so there's, actually there's Shane looking at one of the weak points of that impoundment. And if you look closely, you can see there's only about three or four inches between the actual water and air. So that's not in good shape. It's in bad shape. All right, so now we're up above that pond, and this is the little stream that goes over toward Walmart. It's in really nice condition, very stable. It's got a nice floodplain. It's got a nice floodplain. It's got trees on it, and there's no problems up there at all. That's the one to the eastern branch of the stream above the pond. Again, that's a little intermittent tributary and just flows after big rain events and for a month or two after that. And then it will dry up in the summer. Again, it's in pretty good condition. It's not really adding to the problem or situation at all. All right, so you can see that slug of sediment in the pond, and that came down from this guy right here. And that guy is a big swale, riprap line swale, that was not always riprap lined, I imagine. And if you go back. All right, so you see that, where that sediment came in? That came washed in from two sources, most likely from Miller's Auto Salvage Yard, which has some bad slopes eroding. And part of that came from the Trinity Development as well. It's obviously being caught by that pond right there. So if you take that pond out and stabilize it and plant a vegetation, it acts as basically a sponge or a filter to catch that sediment going through there. All right, so there's our riprap swale. And again, you can see that there's not a whole lot of sediment in that riprap swale. So that plume that's in the pond is a historic plume before this was repaired. This is now what I consider repaired, and it's fairly stable, and it's not dumping a lot of sediment in the system. All right, here's kind of the crux of our analysis here is a series of historical photos. Google Earth is a wonderful tool these days. You can go through historically from back in the 90s to today and see exactly what was going on out there over time. All right, so again, I can't use my little pointer, but you can see the Cove down there. It's the little kind of knee that's sticking out into the forested area there. And those two little lines you can see, the top one is Reliance Court and the bottom one is Placid Court. So keep your eye on that. Okay, so there's Reliance and Placid Court being built. What do we see? We see the plume starting to grow on both the upper branch of that, up in here, up on this side, and then down in here, right on that Cove. It's pretty evident that that sediment is coming from the construction of those roads. At least it seems evident to me, anyway. All right, so now we have the courts built and houses going in. And you can clearly see that plume in the upper branch has gotten even worse, and there's a little bit more down in here. So you're seeing, this is back in 2015. And again, this is three years before Trinity started their construction. You can see that buildup in the Cove already. All right, now here we are today. That was taken last year. And you're not seeing a whole lot of difference, even though you've got the Trinity Development now going in right here. You've got a lot of disturbance going on, and yet you're not seeing a whole lot of difference in that Cove down in there. So that series of historical photos was very important, as well as analyzing some soil cores that were taken by Joel Wood and Associates, who's the town engineer. And those soil cores indicated that most of the sediment plume out there has been there for quite a while because it had turned anaerobic and changed colors. And the upper three inches of soil in that Cove is still the tan colors that you can see was recently deposited. So in the three feet of sediment in that Cove, only about three to four inches of that was done in the last couple of years out of three feet. So that's, you know, less than 10% from new development. Historically, we didn't have, the erosion control rules were quite as strict. And so, you know, a lot of sediment got put in these lakes before they decided that we need to crack down on this stuff. So that's basically what's kind of happened here. So why did this happen? All right, so we have accelerated stream erosion. Why? We have an increased runoff from the watershed and decreased forest land cover. We have development coming in. So we have increased impervious surfaces. We have flash flows going through there. And when that hits the natural area, those natural areas are getting more and more susceptible to erosion because we're having these, for whoever knows why, there's just more serious rain events that we're having. And they're more frequent and they're heavier. Okay, so there we go. So Reach Two has dumped quite a bit of sediment. It's quite evident. And if something's not done out there, it's going to continue to put sediment in that Cove. All right, so the secondary reasons this happened is because your soils out there, they're highly erodible. They're sandy. They're not a really good clayey silt soils. They're sandy soils. So they don't take a lot to erode and to lose their integrity. So you've had 15 years of fairly intense development right around that Cove. I mean, you've got Reliance Court, Calming Way, Placid Court, Stonecrest Boulevard. All those things dumped sediment in over the last 15 years. Lots of sites were being built. I guess that's the end of it, then. Okay, well, I thought there was a couple more, but no, I'm glad there's not. All right, questions, Tom, now?
Of counsel. With counsel.
Counsel? Yes, sir. Yes, Gus.
Thank you for all the hard work. We appreciate it. With all due respect, and whenever I say with all due respect.
That means you're wrong.
Be careful what comes afterwards. I get it. And I mean, part of it, you keep going back and saying 15 years, 15 years. Well, as a city, if we permitted and allowed this development, whether it be the Serenity Point with those three streets, or whether it be Trinity Point, I think we're responsible. Sorry. But you keep talking about 15 years. I personally have lived in that area for four. What's at the mouth of that creek wasn't there four years ago. It didn't get there until Trinity Point started development. Common sense. That's why all the people that live there have been going out there and putting those PVC pipes in because that's what they were asked to do. They would come either to the city, or some came to me. What do we do? What do we do? What do we do? You got to prove it. You got to prove it. You need to do this. You need pictures. You need to check this. You need to check that. So they've all been doing that. And, you know, those PVC pipes are buried now. They're buried with sediment from Reach One and Reach Two. Is it, did it all come from Reach Two? I don't know. You're the engineer. I'm not. All right? But it wasn't that way until they clear cut Trinity Point. I'm tired of hearing about rain. It has rained as long as the earth has been here. Yes, we've had a lot of rain, but we got rain 10 years ago. We got rain 15 years ago. We've had heavy rain here. But it didn't come flying down that hillside and get into that creek and turn it into what it is now until Trinity Point clear cut that property. You know, you talk about the sediment in Reach Three. Well, it makes its way through there, too. When the water's rushing through there, it may be suspended in there, and they've got their BMP, and, you know, that's fine, but it does make its way down there. I've watched it fill in. I think we have a duty to protect the homeowners that live down there. These people bought their homes and built forever homes in those areas. And those homes are worth, and I checked with a reputable realtor, those homes are worth $150,000 to $200,000 less when they lose their water. It's a big difference between water view and waterfront. There's a big difference between having a dock with boats on it and having to walk through the mud to put your canoe, which one of the neighbors who, there's a crowd of people that wanted to come tonight that chose not to due to COVID. But Mr. Becker, who's been here many times before, now has to walk through mud to put his kayaks. Now, he bought Water View. He knew he was Water View. He bought Water View. There's others that have dirt all the way around their docks. I'm sorry, and I understand, nobody wants to be subpoenaed, and nobody wants to go to court. Nobody wants to try and prove something because you can't prove it. But anybody who's been to one of these meetings when we talk about this, I always say the same thing. Everybody looks at it and knows where it came from. Even you yourself are saying that, you know, this problem has gotten worse and people didn't pay attention to it until recently. But when you go to do something about it, the answer is always, ready? Well? And nothing happens. All we can ever say is, well? And I don't want to say well anymore. I'm off my soapbox.
And I hear you. And you're absolutely right. This is very personal, and it has to do with people's property values. And we understand that. We also, as an engineering firm, have to use the facts that we, you know, we can see. And, you know, it looks to us that that plume has been there for quite a while. And it could have, there's no doubt that it's gotten worse, Gus. Absolutely no doubt. Can you say that Trinity Point is the majority problem for that Cove and the sediment in that Cove? I just don't think you can possibly say that. Now, you could make the case that there is some sediment in that Cove that is resulting, you know, basically resulting of that land clearing and also the BMPs that spilled and the breaches. We've seen the breaches. They've been documented. You know, they're there. So there's no doubt that there's soil and sediment that's come from Trinity. And probably Reach Two is probably worse because of all that clearing, and you're having a little bit more raining through there. But to say that they're the sole person at fault, it's just legally, you can't do it.
They don't have to be the sole person if they're responsible for it, then we should be able to do something about it. And if we don't, then I think the city should do something about it. And we've got, we've got people coming down. It's a safety navigation hazard. This weekend, three boats came driving down into what they thought was decent water and ran aground. This weekend alone, Saturday and Sunday, three boats came driving down into that Cove and ran aground because that Cove used to have 10, 12, 14 feet of water in it. And now there's places where it's got none, and a lot of places where it's a foot, foot and a half deep.
Duke Lake Management's opinion of the situation is that you cannot clean out anything in that lake unless there's a municipal or county order to do it. So if the city comes up and orders it to be done, then Duke will permit it. Otherwise, they won't. And they're under, you know, regulatory energy commission rules. They really can't bend any of that stuff, so.
Would you repeat that? Tell me what that means. If we pass an order that that Cove has to be cleared out? Tell me what that means when you say.
Okay. Duke does defer to local municipalities violations. And if you say there's been a soil or water quality violation in our town here and we want it cleaned up, Duke will then go to FERC and say, we've got a local municipality with a problem. They want to clean it up, and you can get that. But that's.
So we just get the permission to do it?
Yeah, well, Duke will issue you a permit to dredge that out of there. But it has to go through a bunch of steps first. The first thing you have to do is somebody at either York County or TUK has to write a violation that, you know, there's water quality standards and it needs to be cleaned up. And whoever owns, you know, needs to, I'm not sure who's responsible for doing that. And that's part of the question as well.
So, but you can point out to at least three inches was.
I would safely say that at least, you know, maybe 10% of that is probably a result of recent development.
I think you have a question back there.
Come up to the microphone, please.
So I live in that Cove. And that picture you had there was actually taken from my duck. If you took that aerial view right now, you wouldn't be able to tell where the sediment starts and stops because now it's a bed of grass. All right? And it extends probably a quarter to a third out into that Cove. So the only, one of the issues I have with those aerial photos that you show is that it doesn't show the lake elevations at those time periods. So we don't know how high the water was or how low it was. I also wanted to ask if you guys actually measured the runoff and the turbidity of water coming out of Trinity Point?
When we were there, there was no turbidity, water running out of Trinity Point. There isn't any.
Okay, so every time it rains, it's just clay pouring out of there. All right? I've taken video of it. We have pictures of it. And those PVC pipes, the three inches of sediment is laughable. During one rain event, those pipes measured seven inches of sediment. One rain event. So again, I would just ask that in your studies, I don't think they're, you know, as complete as they need to be. You also made an interesting point, like, I don't know, two minutes into your presentation, you said in Reach Two that all the sediment came from land development.
Well, it's coming from, the impervious surface upstream is causing more flash flows through that system and causing revenue on Reach Two. That's correct. It is a result.
You said it comes from land development, and it's clear that it came from Trinity Point, and still, nothing has been done. The next time it rains, it'll be the same thing, washing right in there.
Rich, you had said that you submitted a remediation plan or a plan of attack to Tom. Obviously, you talked about what we would need to do if we wanted to dredge that portion of the lake as a city. Other kind of large-scale things that we could do, maybe within the creek bed itself? Do you have any suggestions? I'm sure that he could probably send us the study as well.
They are dictated or included in that recommendations memo. But one of the main things that we were recommending is that due to the fact that you have Reach Two, which is obviously in a state of horrible condition right now, that could be restored. And you can push that over to the left. There's floodplain there. You can create a stable stream channel with bigger capacity, channel size, and sloped banks, and plant all that. So you stop the actual erosion that's happening in that direct vicinity. It doesn't really address the Trinity Point upstream. He's absolutely right about that. But you can stop what's going on in Reach Two by just restoring that reach right there. But, and again, I can't dispute, you live there. I'm not, you know, saying that either Gus or you are incorrect. I'm just saying that this is the, you know, the evidence that we see concludes with two other studies that have already been done. And I'm sure you've heard it already, and, you know, I'm not happy about it. But, I mean, it's not, it's nearly impossible for us to say that Trinity Point is, you know, a responsible party for that, the majority of the sediment in that plume.
Those pipes are over three feet long. There's some that you can't even find anymore. So to say that three inches was deposited there in the last year and a half since I bought the property is just insane, right?
Well, you know. And those samples were taken, you know, not deep in the water. They were taken closer to the shore, I'm sure. Now, if you would like to see an analysis of all the cores out there in that sample, that wasn't part of our study. You can do it, but that wasn't really part of our scope. Our scope was to review the previous work that was done, look at what's out there right now, interview everybody that we can, and make some conclusions. And that's what we did.
Rich, thank you so much for providing us with this information. I think it's been, I think it's been helpful just to get a understanding. And thank you for walking us through each of the reaches. So one of the things that, you know, I've heard this council talk about is, in order to fix the issue in the Cove, that would require dredging. And then it sounds like what you're recommending is some upstream remediation. Is there any possibility that the sediment that's there now could somehow, like, shift or keep moving down further into the Cove and like, that so it's not so intense right there around the docks and stuff? Is it going to continue to move?
It doesn't really move too much. You know, you do have a little bit of stream flow that comes through that little tributary, and it does push sediment out into the lake. But the, you know, the three feet of sediment that's out there and buried, it's just the very top of it that's being pushed out. So you've got a, you know, a cake. You're pushing the icing of that cake over, and it's moving out, but the cake's still sitting there.
Okay. So there's no chance that that will change on its own?
Not naturally, no.
Okay. And then let's just say that we went with dredging. It sounds like even if we did go with that option based on what you're saying and how things will continue to get worse, that eventually that would just, that Cove would just fill right back up.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to continue to get worse to a certain point. That Reach Two and the upstreams, they're going to start to stabilize. And then the sediment's going to be reduced over time. But right now, you've got an active source of sediment right now. If you dredge that out in about three or four years from now, yeah, you're going to have a lot more sediment pulling right back in that cave.
And from, you know, just an economical standpoint, would you suggest that focusing on Reach Two is probably our best, you know, in order of recommendations and things like that, like focus on Reach Two?
My opinion is by far, that's the most important thing for you guys to do. But it's also expensive to do that kind of stuff. Stream restoration is just not cheap.
And are, are you familiar with like the grant process? Is there any?
There is grants. There's clean, actually, I know there's some grants. Uh, there, there is grants, there's clean, actually, um, I know there's some grants, yeah. Um, I'm not really sure how much, uh, is available, um, for that kind of work. I'd have to look into that.
Okay, but you're not familiar of an ongoing revenue source for that type of part?
No, no, I mean, there, there's, these problems are all over the place. I mean, your guys aren't the only, you know, part of, of Lake Wiley or Lake Norman. All the lakes are, are going through this and we're getting more and more of this type of work actually. And more complaints about it because it's now starting to get worse and worse.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, one other question. Well, I, I know you were talking about the, the Trinity Pond earlier. Um, and one thing you had mentioned, I believe you said that you had given them an estimate. And I couldn't tell if that was an estimate or remediation that Trinity was responsible for, that they were taking a look at? Okay.
Yes, that, that's their property and it's their responsibility and that's, then we give them the court to do that. I'm going back and forth right now on exactly what they want us to do.
And is that something that we're like holding them to, to fix?
They, they are responsible wholly for that pond. Uh, it was, uh, the pond was created by Miller, um, before Trinity ever came to be. That pond's been there for, for quite some time. It's now on property that Trinity owns. So, whether they fix the dam, dredge the pond, or, um, remove the pond and establish the wetlands, that's 100% on them, absolutely. If that dam fails before they do it, they are responsible for it, 100%.
Now that they've really been made aware of it, they're, they're, I think they understand their liability.
Because, eh, again, to your point, if, if there is a breach there, there's significant sediment that could or would at that point then just carry down?
Yeah, and whether they could possibly get fined for that is, you know, it's possible, but I, I don't know, you know, it's, when you buy a piece of property and there's a pond on it and the pond fails, is that your fault? Probably is, so.
Any other comments? Does the public want to make any comments or questions? Step up to the microphone.
I just have one more question. How much, so you said that Trinity Point has remedied something in the last week or two weeks, you said, recently?
Well, we've been in a close, remediate that pond and recently, within the last couple of years, they stabilized that swell with all that rock.
That was the sediment, uh, it was this one that he referred to.
So, how much sediment is Trinity Point responsible for? How much sediment have they put into that watershed?
That's impossible.
There's your answer, they don't know, nobody knows.
I thought we just heard three inches.
I mean, that's what they said and I, but.
We don't know, they could have put it all in there.
I, I, I know, when the core samples have been dug, I'm not an engineer. When the core samples are dug, they go based on the, the color of the dirt in the tube. And if it looks fresh, then that sediment that came from Trinity or from Reach Two or from wherever, it allegedly turns gray as it decays with leaves and algae and, and whatever. But I, I question the science of that right now only because I've seen those PVC tubes get buried beneath feet of sediment, not three inches of sediment. It's done that in the last four years. So, maybe we just have extra special soil and leaves that turn gray faster than everywhere, anywhere else. I, I don't know, I just know observationally, when those pipes were put in at our request, the city, when the pipes were put in place, you know, they were in one location and they were sticking out of the ground like this. And now some of them are nearly buried, Chris? Some of them are nearly buried. So, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm totally disagreeing with the three inches. It's, it's feet, not inches, not three feet, but it's feet. And I, I mean, it's like Chris said, that, that area now that we're talking about, that you took a picture that looked like it had water, it's got grass growing on it now. It's been there long enough that you could mow it since you took your pictures.
I'm not saying that three inches came, um, from Trinity. What I said was three inches are, you look like you, it was recently sediment deposited there. I think that you, I believe you 100%, you could have easily come up a couple of feet. With the amount of sediment that's coming out of that Reach Two, every time it rains, chunks the size of meat are falling into that creek, okay? And, and that's being washed down into there. So, yes, I, I believe that, that you had more sediment than three inches in the last few years. But to say that Trinity Point is the one that's dumping in there, I can't agree with that.
Well, where, where would it be coming from? All, all the other tributaries, I guess you're saying is?
Well, no, I mean, most of the, the street, historically, a lot came in there building Placid Court and Reliance Court. A lot of that, they weren't just, sediment was just, you know, washing in, so that's historical, okay? What's happened in the last three to five years is this Reach Two has now been overwhelmed by the development. It could, you can say Trinity Point's at fault for overwhelming Reach Two. What I'm saying is that that's where your sediment's coming from. I can see it, I can see slugs of sediment falling into the creek as we walk by there. So, that's where the sediment's coming from.
And you're saying that it's because there's so much more, wait, no, so much less impervious surface because of the, all the development, that means more water.
Yeah, more water, faster flows, flashy flows.
Which then is gonna automatically take away even more and more and more of the bed, the stream bed that was there and stable before.
And once you lose your trees, which you've lost on Reach Two, then you've got no roots to hold those banks. And then they go fast. And that's why in the last two or three years, you've seen probably a good, maybe two or three feet of sediment in there. I'm just saying that that sediment has been in there. And the reason it changes colors is because it becomes anaerobic and you have a different chemistry there. And certain mineral soils take longer to turn colors, organic soils turn quicker. And so, you've got, it's a pretty distinct color, coloration. Now, I, I can't make a whole lot of conclusions from those samples, and you're absolutely right about that, Gus. But all the other evidence shows that, you know, there's, there's some, obviously some sediment that has made its way to that cove from Trinity, but the majority doesn't look like, there's, their BMPs are in pretty good shape. They're, they're top-notch BMPs, you know? And, and when they do have a breach, you know, Shane seems to be on top of it and gets them to clean it up. So, not saying that that's not a source, it's, I'm just, my opinion is, professional opinion, is that it's not the primary source.
Do keep in mind, I don't know if anyone told you, if your historical photos went back that far, but that BMP was built long after construction started. After they had a number of breaches and DHEC came out and me and Tom and Russell with DHEC walked it. And he was shocked at what their initial control program was. And he got with Tom and demanded that they do something different. That's when they, that's when they built that retention pond and put all the drains in there and the other erosion control devices. In the beginning of the process, that wasn't there. There was a couple of, uh, strings of riprap and, and a double silt fence, that's all they had in the beginning.
Was there any, uh, time that we had, or do we have any sort of historical data that looked at the different reaches on the stream to, um, like inventory? Okay, the stream used to be, you know, two feet wide, now it's eight feet wide or anything like that?
They don't have the detail, you really can't, because it's a forested system and there's just trees that you, you can't see that, you know, the, the detail of the stream with the end of the water.
And what about requirements? Have you ever seen, um, like a municipality or whatnot put in requirements that had new development? Do any sort of inventory or audit like that of pre-construction conditions versus post-construction conditions of the streams? Is, is that like from a policy standpoint?
That's a little unusual, I would say. But, you know, you, anytime you develop, you, you as the city authorize new development, you put whatever conditions and rules on that you want, you know? And, and because this is happening to you, you might want to consider writing that in your, in your regs, you know? You've got to measure your streams, you know, in association with your development. And if they look like they're getting degraded, then you, then you're responsible. And, and get them to approve, you know, agree to that in their permit.
I mean, I know it doesn't fix the, fix the situation now, but just, that might be something we might want to consider is just having, for any new development going forward, having them or certain conditions that say that they have to record pre-conditions of any sort of stream system that runs through that property or, um, water flow goes through it. Um, and then post-construction, or post-construction, evaluate the difference and see, or just ensure that. And then that gives you concrete evidence going forward.
Ah, that's a great, um, result of, of our study would be to, to look at that and changing some regulations as far as the small streams that you guys. You're not that big an area, you can really look at what you've got now and say, okay, if we're gonna put a new develop, big development in here, we've got these streams down here and we know what happened with Trinity Point, okay? Let's make sure that these guys are gonna monitor that and if it starts to degrade, then they're responsible for fixing it. That's a great thing. Now, maybe that's one of the best things that can come out of this. And I, I, I feel sorry for you, I, I really do and I, 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 we went into it with open minds, that's all I can tell you. And we saw, I, I talked to several other engineers that walked the exact same systems that I assume. We're all fairly kind of consistent here, so it's, and you live there, so I'm not going, I'm not disputing what you're saying, Chris. I'm just saying that that's, it's hard for us to make conclusions. And, you know, you want to spend another 20,000, $30,000 in getting out there and, and doing core samples. We can do more stuff, but, you know.
Maybe let's have a more question, we don't have to comment later. So, uh, what is the area between the Stonecrest, Culvert and Trinity Point? What do you call that area? Is that Reach?
Two, between Culvert and where?
It's Reach Three, between Stonecrest, Bullboard and Trinity, it's Reach Three.
Yeah, that's Reach Three.
And in your slide, how did you describe that particular area?
It's in stable condition.
It's in stable condition, so there's nothing coming out of the bottom of the bed? There's nothing that would lead you to believe that erosion in that area would be getting into the lake?
No, I'm, what we did say is that it looks like the bank sloughing off at Reach Four is washing down into the system there. And we saw, um, some sediment in the flood plain when we walked through there that came, obviously came directly from the BMP at Trinity. But it was, you know, an inch or two for about the size of this room right here. And they were instructed to clean that up.
And in your study, did you guys visit during a rain event?
It isn't, no.
No. So, we never saw what was actually coming? If I show you this picture here of your Reach Three, does that look like a small amount of sediment or does it look like a lot?
Yeah, it looks like muddy water.
Muddy water, that's coming directly from Trinity Point. I took these videos, I posted them on YouTube at the mayor's recommendation. I have all the data, it's evident of who caused this and why it's there. All right, so I'll just leave with that.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Well, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming out. Okay, next we'll do, uh, move on to item two, public comments. We have four people that want to make com, you want to make your comments or are you already done? Okay, next is Ruthie Smith. Ruthie, you want to come up? Please state your name and your address, please, and you have three minutes for comments.
Okay, my name's Ruthie Smith. Um, I live at 8039 Windjammer Drive. I've lived here since, uh, the year 2000. And, um, we have had many concerns over the past few years that have been addressed and fixed them re, and fixed with some resolutions. Um, but mainly our concerns are traffic and safety, excessive speeding along Windjammer, illegal parking, not only a, along the streets and the side streets, but also at the park. And then the park restrictions aren't being enforced and maintained because we just don't have the resources and, and the policemen to be down there during the hours that they need to be. They're all over the place and I'm just speaking on behalf of Windjammer. You can put all the signs you want up there, but unless someone is down there, it's not gonna make a difference. So, back in 2012, um, Windjammer once again came together because the condoms were washing up under our boats in Torrance Creek where the, um, the ski team, uh, ski show has their, um, shows. And we got a gate put up there and locked. The hours were reduced or been posted from seven to 10. So, it used to be the park just said we're closed at 11, but we need more reinforcement down there. We, and we also had a park attendant down there. I recommend and Windjammer recommends and other parks that are having disturbance issues going on, we recommend that we have like a Tika K person hired there. Not just a security guard from, from April to September on Friday, Saturday and Sunday from 11 to 8 that turns everybody around. That really fixed the problem, it did. It was a deterrent and people that don't come down there for all the right reasons, stop coming down there. So, that would really prevent everything that's going on, on Windjammer. And please put that flashing speed sign back there, that made a huge difference. They don't know how fast they're going. And it's, it's a mile and a half to get from the time you turn on Windjammer to the park and they are tired of driving down there looking for it, you know? So, it's a beautiful park and, and we have kids and dogs and please keep our streets safe. And thank you for all y'all do.
Thanks, Ruthie.
And I didn't cry this time.
Chris, you want to come up next? State your name and address? And I don't see a subject here, so you're gonna surprise us all.
Yeah, Christoph Albersen, 8026, Windjammer. Echoing a lot of Ruthie's points, um, I have five children aged six and under, um, just a few houses up from the park. And it's terrifying that I'm, my wife and I and the neighbors are the only thing in between them, you know, getting smacked by a car. Uh, there's a lot of speeding, um, but also in the past, just this summer, it seems to have really dialed up the intensity of, of what we're seeing there. We were never seeing people's car windows getting smashed in there before. We're, that, that just happened a couple Sundays ago. People's shoes getting stolen off the beach, um, you know, and, and, and the parking, of course, is crazy, the speeding's crazy. You know, there are some ways that you could finance it too, that, that, um, or fund, you know, having additional support. Because it's not just us, it's also Pick Karen that, and we kind of seem to go back and forth. We noticed there was a lot of law enforcement at Pick Karen on Sunday and then we get like double the load at Windjammer of people who, who, uh, don't have parking permits or don't want them. But, you know, if you could do things like looking at, uh, day passes or, or, or even, you know, charging for passes or, um, you know, we have another park, Tika K's Beach and Swim Center that has a big empty parking lot all the time, potentially sell passes there, I don't know. But, um, you know, we could be creative about how, how to fund this, I guess is what I'm saying. And, and you got a big investment there in Windjammer Park. I don't know if you know, the bathroom signs, one of them's already snapped off, um, right on that brand-new park. And, and so, there's, there's a lot for the city there and we want to protect that and protect our, our families.
All right, thank you. Did I hear you say you have six children under five?
Five under six.
God bless you, man. Well, when anytime you see something like that happening, you know, um, it's great that you find out, you know, please call somebody, let us know when a bathroom sign snaps or, or there's trash or anything. You know, that's, that's just the way we find out better, instead of keeping it to yourself. And you probably have already called in, but if you could just call in, somebody will be dispatched down there and fix it, okay? Thanks. Uh, next be, uh, Chris Valoric, wants to talk about trails.
Hello, good evening, I'm Chris Valovic, I live at 3221 Alder Court, I live in the Lakewood Development. I'm VP on the HOA Board, I'm also a member of the trail clubs in that area. Um, so I'm here this evening, I know you guys are getting ready to go through the budgeting process. Um, I'm just here putting a, a bug in your ear that as you go through this process, after you've taken care of all of the regular budgetary stuff, if there's additional money, uh, we're looking for some support in the Lakewood area to connect the manor section of our development over to the, the main section over on Solandra Way. Uh, there's a area where there's already existing trail, uh, that was made by volunteers and it, it cuts across the city property and also crosses over Johnny Town Branch Creek. The, because of the lay of the land and where the stream is, there's some flooding in there and the area's always wet and muddy. And, uh, we need some support, uh, to improve that area. And I'm asking if the city could appropriate some funds towards that. Uh, Tim Gillette has already viewed the area, Charlie's aware of that too. I'll send you guys some emails and I'll ask for some community support to reach out to you for, to express the importance of this so we can connect the community, so they can use the, um, other parts of our community, the amenity center, and also connect to the other trails on that side and also connect to the sidewalks that connects to the rest of Tika K. Uh, right now, any of those residents, they either have to get in their car or their golf cart and driver class new gear rack, which can be dangerous in that area. So, I'm just putting it out there that I'm looking for, uh, some support later on as you go through this process. And, uh, I'll be contacting you guys later as we, you guys move through that budget process.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, we've actually been talking about this for several years. We even have a, a trail kind of laid out and a price kind of laid out and it's never been enough money. It's always the money thing. If I just had one more million dollars, I can do anything, but.
Uh, is, is that trail connector, is that on our bike and trail pad plan already? It is, okay.
I think it's on there.
Okay, cool.
So, I'd like to, if I can continue, if I could, um, if you guys could make this a project, you know, we could work this together and look at it with the board. And we're also willing to contribute funds if we maybe had some matching funds and you could assist us in there.
That's the magic word.
From the labor, the labor perspective, so we have, um.
You win the prize.
I'll take it.
We love matching funds.
There are two trail clubs that are, uh, in that area, so there's a Lakewood Trail Club, there's also the Baxter Trail Club. Uh, those two groups work very closely. Those two groups work very closely together. So, as far as manual labor, getting out there and doing things, that is not a problem. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Bingo. With that area, if I'm, if I'm thinking of this right trail, it needs some elevation because it's in the, you know, it's prone to floods, or?
The area I think you're, you're thinking about is the, the connection between Stonecrest Boulevard, going through the Greenway and connecting down to Beach Club.
Yes.
That, that one has significant amount of, of wetlands, floodplains, things like that.
That's the one we've been discussing.
The, the one that, that Chris is talking about, it's, it's a shorter, but you still got to span the bridge across the Johnny Town Branches, he mentioned. Tim's already gotten a pre-engineered cost estimate. It's not, it's not cheap.
Nothing is.
But, Tim, Tim and Alan, I've, I've been on some of their communications. Hopefully, they're going to be able to work through this week with some perhaps alternate routes that may help bring that down. I think the request, it originated with Alan Spain with their HOA, was originally for perhaps a paved trail. But I think from the, don't go in conversation, I think it's just more of a hard surface, at least to start with. So, perhaps like a gravel, you know, compacted gravel type thing to start, because these, this is one of, Chris, what, maybe two or three trails that y'all's trails group has done through City Greenway out there? In addition to the paved trail that's on the other side?
Yes, you have the paved trails, and there's several other trails that we've improved in that area along the Johnny Town Branch Creek. And a, a compacted gravel or something like that would be sufficient. The idea is that we have families that aren't really hikers or bikers, that area there is quite muddy, and we need some assistance with elevating that and maintaining that.
You have our interest.
I'll make sure that I maintain your interest.
Does that, would this trail be golf cart friendly as well?
So, that's, depends upon what the bridge crossing would be.
Okay.
And that would be my concern. As of right now, golf carts couldn't go there because it's too muddy, and I would not want a golf cart crossing the bridges there now. It's made for pedestrians, bikers, runners, hikers.
Okay, so are you, I guess?
I am not requesting golf cart access.
Okay, thank you.
You've, you've got some terrain in there that without some significant switchbacks, it would make it hard for a golf cart going through there.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thanks.
Are there any other public comments? Somebody who might have came in late that want to have, have something to say? Okay, hearing that, public comments is closed. We'll move on to item three, approval of minutes. Approval of minutes. Counsel, you've read the minutes. Is there any additions, deletions, or changes? Hearing none, it stands as published. Let's go on to item four, new business. Item four A. This is consideration of road acceptance easements and infrastructure detailed in the title to real estate as presented and contained in Cadence Map One. Developer for Cadence did submit a request to the city to accept the roads easements and infrastructure contained within Map One. The roads and infrastructure have been inspected by city staff and engineers and have been found to meet city standards. Our attorney has reviewed and approved the title to real estate affidavits and release of liens related to this request. Are there any comments or questions? Alright, that's pretty straightforward. I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd make, to make a motion to accept the roads easements and infrastructure as detailed in the title to real estate as presented and contained within Cadence Map One.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
And a second from Heather Overman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Let's go to item B, four B, two, move my little cursor up here. Oh, this is the Strategic Initiatives and Budget Workshop. Do you want to take a couple minute recess for ten minutes?
Before we start diving in this, five to ten minutes, whatever?
Please.
Five's minute. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Strategic Initiative and Budget Workshop. Who's taking this? Is this you?
Yes, sir.
Charlie?
Okay. I'll, I'll get us started. With me one second here. I thought I had it on my, oh, here it is. Oh, shoot, that's the wrong one. So, council was sent this presentation from Katie. I'm just going to kind of skip, skim through it somewhat quickly, but as council will recall, we started the, developing the city's first strategic plan about two years ago, a little over two years ago. And in that time, what we've put together and worked with the department heads on, it's gone through several reiterations to the point that we've got it now. But in, in moving to get to that point, obviously, there's a lot of community input via, excuse me, via surveys, work session with council, various focus group meetings and the like, to make sure that we were headed the right direction in developing this plan. Really want to kind of get to, I want to skip through some of her slides here. I believe she has put this, or is putting this up on our website as we, as we move through this, so that the public will be able to view it as well. You know, the, the big three themes that really came out of our workshop with council was small-town feel, capital resource, investment, and our, just our customer interactions, and our, and our customer relationships. And from there, we really started diving in with, with department heads, and I want to think, I think we've got just about all of them here tonight. We've got two that are still on quarantine right now, and, and obviously Bob Barkin. So, but what we want to do tonight, you know, department heads worked hard on, and they came up with a hundred and five initiatives. I don't want to sit here and go through all hundred and five initiatives, unless we're ordering dinner in. So, to, to be somewhat brief with this, you know, council will, will remember this was the first version, lots of reds and yellows and greens and things like that, and not, not the easiest thing to read or really follow. Really have to tip my cap to Katie Paulson on this. When we were at our, at the ICMA conference last fall, she and I both kind of split up around various workshops while we were there that all centered around strategic planning and the like. Katie has taken the ball and really run with this, talking with other, other cities, local, as well as some contacts that we made while we were at ICMA. How do y'all do it, kind of thing? How are you tracking it? And as she said her presentation to council on this, when she sent this to y'all last week, yeah, it's, it's really great getting a one spot to house the data, instead of data here, there, and yon. Because I think, and department heads will agree, is, is we went through this process, we found out, we got a lot of data, it's just all over the place. I mean, it, it's not in one spot where we can all reach and grab it and follow it and see what does it tell us. So, that's, that's what we're kind of on the cusp of getting started. Alicia and Heather, thank y'all for your time on it. Started going through the comments and questions that y'all had. I've shared those with, that document y'all sent to Katie to department heads. And we'll be going that, through that with them this week to make sure that we get y'all responses back, okay? One thing that I do, that, and I noticed it here with, with looking through y'all's, and want to make sure that we're clear, so on the performance measurements, those are just really our key performance indicators, okay? So, some of the stuff that we got back, it was, it's really more, in our opinion, kind of falls under the, the initiative side column. So, Katie and I are going to look through that together and make some adjustments, make some tweaks. You know, some of it is, we've never tracked data. So, I'll, I'll use community events, for example, like Joey and I had a good conversation about this today. We estimate there's probably, most concerts, fifteen hundred people at a concert, you know? There's, on a good year, three to four thousand people that may come through Fall Festival, not there at one time, but throughout that event. But it's nothing we've ever really tracked, you know? And it's never really anything we've sought feedback on. People say, hey, we love community events, it makes us have that small-town feel. But do you really like the Fall Festival, or is it just, that's the event, so we're going to go to it? Would you rather see a spring fling? Would you rather see neither and see more concerts? You know, that kind of thing. So, we've never really tracked that, and we've never really looked at that. It's just, eh, well, you know, we've been doing concerts for a long time, and people keep showing up for them, so we keep doing them, you know? So, those are the things that, you know, as we start this now, you know, we've got these things in a, in a spot, how are we doing with it? Yeah? Are, are people showing up? Do people enjoy it? Okay? What, what are we achieving by doing it? You know? And that's where we want to get to, okay? And I think, yeah, and this is, this is definitely going to be a live, a living, breathing document that Katie, I've tasked her with, she's going to be bothering our department heads on a quarterly basis, where are you at with the stuff for this quarter? Are you going to be able to do the stuff next quarter? Do we need to adjust this? So, it's, you know, what y'all are seeing right now is kind of a snapshot in time. And when, when, you know, and this is something that we'll continually update and keep out there on the internet, or on our website, so that the public can view it too. This will be incorporated into the budget book for this year, which will all be online, very interactive, looking forward to showing you all that, the budget book side of things on July thirtieth. So, what I wanted to do briefly tonight, before, and I think it's, it's a good segue, is, one, feedback on the initiatives. Was there anything in there that you're like, ah, whoa, I don't really want to go that direction? Alright, let us know, you know, so we can have a follow-up conversation. Are there initiatives that we didn't think of? You know, something that y'all, hey, what about something like this, or something like that? I, my direction to department heads was to come tonight with something they can take notes on and prepare to listen. Bring all your supporting documentation for the initiatives that you did put together, so if there's one, or, you know, if there's some specific initiative, like, hey, what are you talking about with that one? Where, where are you headed with that? We'll get the department heads up to the, up to the, to the microphone, let them talk you through it, alright? And then kind of move from there. And then, as y'all are starting to give us any new initiatives that you would like for us to look at, I think that'd be a good segue into where do you want to see the budget priorities for 2021? You know, is it increased funding in public safety, or decreased funding in this, or I want to see trails in Lakewood, or whatever the case may be? We've got a mountain of work to do to get ready for July thirtieth, but the team's up to the task, and we're ready for it. So, with that, I'm going to shut up, Mayor, and I'm going to turn it over to you guys.
Alright. So, we start off with any comments? Anybody have anything to say before we get started?
We, does the plan, is we want to go over all these line by line? I hope not.
No. Gosh, no.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, I just want to say, first of all, you guys put a ton of work into this. It's definitely obvious how much time and effort you put in, so I want to thank you for making this a priority. It really shows, you know, where the focus is for our city, that we're all kind of on one vision, one common goals, trying to achieve the things that the people in our community think are important. So, great job, I think it's awesome. Alicia and I got together for like, I don't know, four hours yesterday, and we literally went through it line by line. A couple of the things Charlie mentioned, kind of overarching things that we, we noticed, was making sure that your performance, or your initiative matches your performance goal, right? So, if you're trying to expand your events, I don't know, I'm just giving an example, I'm not point picking on you, Joey. If you want to improve or offer more events, okay, is it just, do we just want to track attendance, or how can we do that? Is it, I want to improve attendance by ten percent over the previous year? So, being a little bit more specific on those goals. So, that was kind of like, one of the things that we noticed was matching that initiative to that performance indicator.
Yeah. So, a lot of what was there was base, almost like your baseline, your, this is where we're starting off with, where we know what our attendance numbers are, and now, you know, you can keep tracking those to see, are your events increasing or decreasing, and what does that tell you about the quality of your events, or the interest of the, of the community in your events? But if your goal is to, but that just gives you some information that can help you make decisions or make tweaks to it. But really, you know, your performance might be, you might want to, like to Heather's point, increase attendance because you're seeing something decrease. And so, you might want to increase it by ten percent, you might want to increase it by five hundred people, you might want to introduce new bands, or something, like, I want to introduce one new band a year, or I want to introduce, you know, you could, so, like, thinking about what, what exactly is it that you want to do and then?
So, one of the things Katie and I have talked about is maybe changing the name of the performance measure to key performance indicator, or that kind of thing, because, you know, to, to us, and maybe we're wrong, but to us, it was, okay, if we want to increase or decrease something by a percentage, that that should be in the initiative, and how are we going to track how we're doing that? That would be in the performance measurement, or key performance indicator, or that type thing.
Right. So, just matching those two.
But, yeah, I mean, but we can definitely have some offline conversations. Yeah, Alicia, I'm sure you've probably seen some with, with City of Charlotte, I would assume, in, in getting that feedback to dial that in, absolutely. So that we're all speaking, and I think that was, department heads, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but listening to some of the conversations y'all had with Katie, getting to the point where we were all speaking the same language when it came to this, was probably the hardest part to begin with. And Katie, I remember Katie telling me through some of the conversations, you could tell when they got it. It was like, oh, I see what we're doing. So, would definitely, definitely enjoy that, that opportunity to, to get it laid out correct. That would be good.
Sorry.
Couple of other things we kind of talked through, and it doesn't mean it's, should be on or off, or just, just kind of some of the things that we noticed. For example, if something was completed in quarter two of two thousand nineteen, does it need to be on here as we're looking specifically at, at goals and budgeting for 2021? Maybe it does. Maybe that initiative speaks to what you're still trying to achieve. So, maybe that does need to stay on here. Or goals that are, we're trying to buy a new truck in 2023, does, does that need to be on here right now, or is that something we add the following year? So, just kind of looking at those dates and those timelines, and, and making sure that when we're looking just at this one year, not that those things aren't important and you should plan long-term, but looking at this one year out, how does, you know, let, let's plan just for, for this, for this specific budget strategy this upcoming fiscal year, knowing that, and, and maybe those things two years out do need to be on here because you're starting that process now. So, just kind of looking at those timelines, and does it make sense to keep it on here or not?
And it would almost be like, if, if it was a vehicle, you would have to have, from a strategic plan standpoint, how does purchasing that vehicle allow you to achieve your target? So, and, and then displaying it that way, but it might, that might even fall more in your capital plan and your business, your business case for that purchase versus actually encompassing, encompassing that in your strategy.
I remember we got together three years ago in the library, was it? When we first got elected, and we talked about our goals, what we wanted to do over the next, and I think we all had some really good ideas, and we came kind of with a common sense that, if I remember, it was public safety was the top thing, recreation was probably the second. We talked about schools, we didn't have a whole lot of influence with schools. But the third thing, I think it's morphed into the term we call now small-town feel. We didn't call it small-town feel back then, but with all the different meetings we've had, I think, you know, with, kind of try to limit growth and try to focus growth in a certain area, maintain our green space, and I think, I think the term now is that small-town feel. So, that's what I always want to focus on. I think we've taken pretty good, darn good care of our public safety the first couple of years. We got a new, new fire station, and we've got the, you know, we have the breathing apparatus, we've got all these new hires, we've done, I think we've done real good there, and we've got the cream of the crop now with our public, with our police stations, and, you know, we've done real good there. I think maybe now we start focusing on the recreation side. People are dying to get out and start doing things and, you know, we're killing, we're hurting for a park so bad. I, you know, it's, it's the.
Well, at least we now know why everybody's going to the Catawba River. Apparently it's Billy's fault.
Billy's been telling everybody. So for me, my, my goal is, you know, I think, I, I, I know it's going to be difficult with the limited fundings and the things, you know, things just haven't quite worked out the way we'd all planned to. But, you know, the park side, the recreation side, I think you can see, Ruthie came up and talked about, you know, everything's, we're all busting at the seams to get out there and start playing somewhere. So I think my focus, I would really like to look at, at the parks, parks and recreation side. And then one other thing that I think I've kind of always been discussing without bringing it up in so much in council was, is how do we track when people email us, call us with a complaint, a concern, they want something fixed? How do we track that? Do we have a, a system of doing that? Cause I remember when I took a class from V HON 10 years ago at Winthrop, when he was an instructor, he talked about when, when Rock Hill, he was assistant then, I think. When Rock Hill got an email, a call, a complaint or whatever, it, it hit some kind of line someplace of Excel spreadsheet or whatever. And then you had 24 hours to return the call and at least make contact with somebody and tell them it's an issue. Then you had to follow through and you had to track it, you know? Here's who I talked to, here's, was it, was it complete or was it sat, were the customer satisfied? Is there something we can't do for him? You know what I mean?
Right, yes, sir.
There's some kind of a.
There's, there's multiple different software applications. We have a report a concern feature on our website. It doesn't have a tracking capability, but it allows the, you know, the, the general public that may not know, hey, I need to email Tim or I need to email Chief Parker, whomever. They can select by category and then we have it routed to a specific email. Now, my direction to staff has been since 2013 that all emails get a response within 24 hours. Even if it's just to say, hey, got your email, let me look into this. You know, phone calls within 48 hours from, from getting that voicemail message type thing.
So how does somebody know that? Who's checking that to see that it was, all that was done?
It's not something that we're actively tracking. I know we do currently have a software, now we're only using the, I'll call it the admin facing side. It's mobile 311, very, very successful. Lots of other cities use it. Where you, our public works folks are using it to identify and generate work orders. As far as identify, here's where we need to send the backhoe for large brush piles. You know, that type thing. They use that on a weekly basis. It does have a, I'll call it a forward facing side for the general public. It's almost like a see, click, fix type thing. I can get into that more with Tim. I don't know how much of a tracking it does, but I know it does generate reporting and things of that nature. We used to use one called VC3 or VC, I'm sorry, VC3 is the software company that based out of Columbia, do a lot with the municipal association. It wasn't good. It was, now it, we could track whether people had responded, but it's not sending alerts. And hey, this person hasn't done this, this person hasn't done, there is software out there, we can, we can absolutely.
Well, I was just thinking, maybe, do you guys get together weekly or is it still monthly?
Uh, we, we typically, well.
Well, now, I mean, it's.
We were meeting twice a month as department heads. Now that we're starting to get a little bit back up to, you know, full staff and full steam ahead kind of thing, that is something that we'll be picking back up. There'll be multiple meetings, both virtually and in person.
Well, that might be something we can just discuss. Here's, here's how many calls we got, and this is now one week old or one, because I, it seems like I'm the tracking device now. And it could be because you guys aren't meeting, but everybody wants to CC me on every email or call me. And what's the status of this, Mayor? What's the status on this?
Right.
And, and I know it's because of the pandemic and you guys aren't meeting a lot, but, you know, you get people out there that frustrate. And they'll start their email and goes, I know you guys have city hall closed and I know this is happening, but, you know, the rainwater's still coming in my basement or the deer are still eating my.
Right, that follow-through.
Whatever, yeah, that follow-through.
Understood.
Charlie, I, this may be wrong, but at work, corporate uses a Zendesk program for, and I don't know about the trackability of it only because I'm the one that reports to it, not the one that uses it. But if there's anything going on in any of our stores, we report it through Zendesk and then it gets routed to someone. But there's people in, that are in charge of making sure that that's handled one way or the other. And there's reporting on the backend of it that I'm sure someone monitors to make sure that the, the issue is, is answered. And the answer can sometimes be no.
Right.
But at least that it is answered. And I know that you guys, as we do, we frequently get requests that just can't be done and we're like deer. But at least the customer gets an answer and, and, and it's trackable so we know that, that they're getting that answer.
Definitely something we can look into.
I don't know if that works or not, it's called Zendesk.
Zendesk, got it.
I think there's a lot of like customer relation management systems out there that probably scale all over the place from organization size to capabilities. And so.
Okay.
That might be.
Sana, ASA, NA is another one.
There's.
Company you guys visualize is everything and keep them on what everybody's working on.
Just about, yeah, there's probably a ton.
Okay, anybody have, want to dwell down on some particulars here?
Sorry, were you finished?
Hi.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, David.
Um, I just want to discuss, I, I wrote things down from the spreadsheet and I noticed this doesn't have the number. So I got to look it up here. It was number 56 on this, it was the Catawba Park. To enhance and provide the recreational opportunities, talks about building Catawba Park. We still need $3.6 million. And then, you know, you got the little red thing there. So I'm just trying to figure out what is the likelihood that anything could be done to Catawba Park this year? Since, with everything going on, is that something that's?
So we, Bob and I have been looking at our H tax and it's actually rebounded pretty well. It, it took a kick in the teeth for a few months, but the June numbers, which we won't have them all in for probably another, probably by the end of next week. What we saw in May was a good uptick. Some of them, some of the largest that they, we've had from them as far as H tax. Some are still getting by, do what now?
Impact fees.
Uh, impact fees are, are still trending well. We had, you know, March was a horrible month. You had a lot of the builders that shut down trying to figure out how they were going to still operate under the new conditions, things like that. Tom, most of them, most of our builders have picked back up and are, are getting back to their pre-March pace though, correct?
Just in the last week, we've gotten probably 10 to 11.
So, yeah, as long as, you know, as long as we can average on that, on that permit side of things, that 10 to 11 per month, that's, that's where we need to be, you know, to, to hit those revenue points. H tax is picking, is starting to pick back up. It'll be really interesting to see what those final June numbers look like. Scared to death of what's going to come fall, winter.
Sure.
To be quite honest, yeah, I mean, as we get into November, I just, for no reason whatsoever, I just.
No, I do too, I feel the same way.
Things are going to shut down. Yeah, and if that happens, yeah, any plan that we have for funding a Catawba Park is going to be shot again. But that is something that Bob Barkin and I are actively working on to bring back to y'all as part of that budget process. I mean, with, with impact fees, with H tax dollars, yeah, there's, as we showed y'all before everything shut down, I think it was what, December, January timeframe? I mean, we realistically had a very good shot at getting phase one funded.
Yeah.
Yeah, and completed.
I think I told everybody that we were, watched for October, November, we're going to start digging dirt and.
Yeah, and then restaurants had to close and, you know, things went, things went haywire, you know? So, yeah, the revenues, I mean, from your, in your first quarter and a half of this fiscal year, revenues were going like gangbusters. I mean, we felt positive, we were going to exceed all of our revenue projections. We were excited. Both business license, building inspections, inspection permits, things like that, everything was trending up. Now, York County kind of kicked us, I guess, right at the jump of the, of the budget season. When they, you know, they, they give us the, their abstract, you know, in July, June, July. Say, all right, here's what you're going to get in property tax revenues. And then they updated it in late September because now they're sending out property tax bills. And they're like, oh, it's about $80,000 less than what we actually told you it was going to be. So I had staff make some adjustments, you know, let's, let's, let's be cautious there. And then we made further adjustments because of, you know, the H tax and the building inspection downturns. Business license actually tracking pretty good. June was an off month and that from our payment from mask. But they said that that's going to be updated come August. So we'll get a bigger payment in August and business license should be exactly where it's supposed to be. So can we get Catawba Park done? That's what we're working on is to get phase one.
Started.
Yes, that, that is a goal that we are going to work very, very hard on trying to make that phase one happen.
And when, you know, give me a date and hour, time group or something.
Um, I would say by third quarter of next year, so that's summertime, breaking ground type thing. If we're able to do it financially, that's, that's when you'd be ready, that's when we'd be ready to, to break that, you know, have that groundbreaking.
So that's really in the next year's budget?
Not, yeah, it's definitely not in this year's budget, no, sir.
All right, I saw a very big number there and I was thinking something, but that's okay. It'll get some, it'll get done someday, I'm, I'm confident of that with the impact fees, it'll get done.
Yes, sir.
So we had put together kind of a council work plan goals back in December when we were all full of hope. And then everything got shattered. So going off of that, and then when I'm looking through this packet, all the ones that I starred tie back into that. And it wasn't intentional, but that's just, so these are in no particular order. These are a wish list. I'm fully aware that most of these probably won't happen. But just to kind of go down the list, Catawba Park being the first, it's ST 22.6. And then that one also ties into the lot at the river access that we had time, started to talk about with Duke potentially, which is the CR 121.19. A trail to connect old and new Teague K, so that's Stonecrest Trail that goes from the Beach and Swim Center to, over to Stonecrest. Obviously, we saw the price tag, so Alicia and I were discussing potentially maybe doing a phased approach to that. Maybe in this next year, we do the engineering and design plan and then the thought, just kind of easing into it since I know with that price tag, there's not going to be a way that we could potentially complete that. That was CR 121.11. And then tying that into what Chris was talking about in Lakewood, you know, I don't know what the cost associated with that is too, but potentially looking.
The pre-design was 250.
Oh, great, okay.
Was that paved?
Maybe we paved that one into.
That was paved, yeah, that, that was with asphalt and everything.
And I think same with this one. I think if we could look at some alternatives to just get the connectivity there and get some of these connections, you know, made and some progress. And then maybe in the future, we can go back through and, and pave.
Yeah, or even, you know, using the spring pick-me-up next year as a clear the trail day. You know what I mean? And using community support to kind of, you know, manual labor kind of thing.
Got it.
Um, to, to see what we can do to drive those costs down potentially. Crosswalk and pedestrian improvements, obviously this has been a two-year in the making situation. We're getting closer, which is exciting. So just trying to finalize that with SC DOT, I know that.
What, it's October?
Yeah, it won't be in by the start of school, which is disappointing, but if we can.
Maybe.
Yeah, right? If we can continue to push them towards, towards working on that, it's CR 121.8. I have Windjammer on here, just obviously it's been a point of contention the last few months, couple months.
Can I ask, and this is really a question for, for all of y'all. I hate that Ruthie's not here, but as we are preparing for the budgets for the coming year, any thoughts as to what you want to see there, direction-wise? Other than just me writing down Windjammer. What, I mean, is, do you, do you want a full-time attendant there from May to Labor Day?
Give us the cost, I mean.
Yeah, I think we need to.
I think that's a high priority.
You, you want the attendant though, is what, is what I'm.
Potentially, yes, yes, I think that, I think that that's the direction that we're looking at. And to, I think Kristoff's point, you know, even, I know we would have to change how the ordinance is read through right now, but even looking at a potential of a day pass, now I don't know, that might cause more issues than it's worth.
Day pass for everybody?
No, 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 residents get their normal pass, but like say.
A day pass for non-residents?
Yeah, a Charlotte resident comes down for the day, they've never been to Windjammer, they roll in and they're, the guy's like, the little guard guy is like, it'll be $100. And they're like, are you serious? I just want to hang out at the beach for like an hour. And then do we want to charge them $100 or is $15 for the day a better solution for that? I don't know. And is that with 30 spots down there, is that taking up a full spot?
Windjammer if you charged $100.
Right, so it's just something to look at, I don't, I don't know.
And are we then charging to get for entrance into the park? I mean, the appearance that we're charging to go to the park, you know, that was, well, we, we just took $120,000 grant for, because the park is open to everybody.
Well, we're going to be charging.
It's just a parking fee. So instead of having parking meters, right, you're just, you're.
You have a parking guy.
I'm just saying, watch the language, you know, we got the call from Representative Brian about that and people were saying, you're charging to get in there, Mayor. You just told me, we don't charge to go in there. So no, it's parking, that's parking, so I got to make sure that, people who come in.
Fair, fair point.
Uber or whatever, you know, walk into the park or whatever, but.
But am I, with the very limited amount of parking there, if you're trying to do day passes, that, that's not, it's not, not fair to the residents, but even more so not fair to the people that paid $100 for a parking sticker and then can't get in.
Sure.
If you're doing day passes, allowing people to come in and come and leave.
We'll have to discuss.
But it's always first come, first served.
I mean.
And that's a fair point, I'm not, I'm just saying, maybe it's something we look at.
I'm, I'm with you on trying to do something about Windjammer. I mean, I, you know, next year, when COVID is hopefully gone, it's never going to be gone. But if everything is open again next year, I wonder if we're going to see the traffic there that we're seeing this year or if it's because people have nowhere else to go. And we're not going to know that until next year. And hell, we don't know what next year is going to be anyway, it's the, the new normal. But, you know, I just threw an idea at Charlie today. It, to me, if we're going to do this, we have to fund it. Well, let's don't pull money from someplace existing, let's find a new means for it. My idea was to bump the non-resident sticker, I was trying to find the right term. My idea was to bump the non-resident sticker to $150 and take that 50 and put it straight, straight towards, you know, additional help at Windjammer. Charlie had a, another wonderful revenue idea, in my opinion, if you'd like to share.
That's Joey's idea.
What's that?
That was Joey's.
That was Joey's idea?
Give Joey the credit on that one.
Joey, great idea. So I, I wouldn't, when it's Joey, Joey, come on up and tell everybody what your idea was, because I like it.
A concession stand.
Margarita stand at Windjammer.
That will, that will pay for itself, for sure.
Well, I just want to point out.
Say the name and address first, please.
I just want to point out, it's only my idea if it works, sir. We had talked about charging at the river access, basically having an attendant there, especially if we can capture additional parking that we're working with Duke Energy, giving us 100 additional spots. So factoring in the crowds that come there, you know, $10, $15 per car, you know, that's obviously going to generate a lot of revenue that's going to help cover the costs of the attendance while you're out there. Plus also give us better controls on maintaining all that, that traffic out there.
Yeah, there's, there's a potential, sorry, there's a potential with charging out there, which Duke has told us we can do. We don't have to go back and get special permission from FERC, we just have to notify them of doing it. But we were estimating your cost for the various seasonal part-time people to have an attendant at Windjammer, attendant here, probably capture all of that cost with revenue generated from people floating down the river by charging that $10 to $15. And that was figuring if we only had 200 vehicles a weekend down there. I think, Chief, we're probably seeing 400 to 500 vehicles a weekend, give or take.
Easy, 400, 500, even the last 10 weekends, that's been easy.
So I guess the long and short of it is, yeah, if, if we were to set up next year, we're charging for the, for the parking at the river access, you wouldn't have to necessarily change things. Now, yeah, as far as a daily pass thing at Windjammer, and you probably generate enough revenue to fund attendance at both.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, do you, they're talking like $10 a carload, not $10 a person. So I mean, you know, a lot of the reason why people love to float down to Catawba, I mean, it's a, it's a free day of drinking.
Yes, family fun, free day of family fun.
At $10 for a whole carload, it's still not a big deal. $10 a head would be a problem, but $10 a carload is nothing.
As, as Chief's experience with the parking issues there, when you show up, your mindset is, I'm floating down this river, I'm, I'm parking somewhere regardless, so I don't think $10, $15 is really going to deter someone from not actually parking and floating down that river.
But what it may do is, you know, encourage them to ride together on their way to the river access.
Um, one other thing actually, Joey, while you're here, is, well, and this might be a Charlie thing too, is right now, and I, I heard Ruthie talking to you about it, if they wanted to, even residents, to get their parking permits, their decals, they have to go Monday through Friday to city hall or they can email Diana. She can put them in the mail, but then it's a three days before you get them or a couple of days before you get them. Is, and I don't think we currently have a system in place right now that we could utilize, but is there a way that we can make getting your parking sticker a little bit more? You know, maybe the attendant can pass it out when they come down to Windjammer. I don't know, just thinking of ways that if they work Monday through Friday till 6 o'clock, you know, and they don't think about it ahead of time, but it's Friday afternoon and they want to go down to Windjammer on Saturday, how are they, you know, because a lot of, when we, when we're writing these tickets, thank you, Chief, for, you know, enforcing those things.
Your fault.
It's, yeah, it, no, no offense. It's, it's a little bit reactive, right? So we're, we're enforcing the, the law or the parking, but are we charging a resident, for example, $100 parking ticket because they were too lazy to go get their parking sticker on Fri, you know what I mean? So could we avoid some of those issues in the first place?
I mean, could we, sorry, before you answer that, I mean, could we even explore just not doing the parking sticker? I mean, if. I mean, if a police officer is taking the time to write, and maybe this goes to more enforcement, and so I'll look at Chief too, but like, writing a ticket, I mean, looking for the sticker, running a license plate number, because when you run the plate number, you're going to see where they live, it might encourage people that live here to get their license plates turned over, which then also helps our schools, which is, was one of the things that you mentioned when our, when we had our strategy session about, you know, making sure we have schools, or have a good partnership with the schools. But I'm just, you know, it, it is inconvenient, and I remember, you know, because we'd leave the house at 6:45 in the morning, and we want to get back Monday through Friday, you know, until like, you know, 6:37. And so stopping by City Hall, or just having the energy or the thought when City Hall's open 8:30 to 5:00. So are there options that we can explore that don't, like, just get rid of the sticker altogether and run the plates?
Well, I think, I think the simplest solution to it is if we do commit to this parking attendant, then it may be something to where we can empower them to be able to hand out the parking permits, assuming that they have, you know, the driver's license that, that match up with everything. I think that's something we could obviously work through with staff training and stuff like that. But without that attendant, that, there would be some challenges there without being able to do that. I can't speak in terms of the enforcement, that's more of a Chief Parker question.
So that, I need to look more into it. So I'm assuming that you're saying that the only way that we write tickets is if we run the tag. So I want to make sure that I understand the question. So you're saying that without the parking stickers, that the officers have to run every tag and any non-resident would, what, what, what is the, I'm, I'm not sure I completely.
So what are our options in terms of, like, let's get rid of the decals? Like, do we have, is there, is there another mechanism? Is it running tag? Or like, you know, license plate numbers? Is it, you know, do we only do that when it's full, or the parking lot's getting full anyways?
I think it's kind of a balance of what council wants, because obviously, you know, the residents want to be able to use the park. And if there's no parking stickers and every non-resident who doesn't pay for a sticker to come, you know, there's a balance for us to be able to enforce that. I think what you're saying might be a little bit difficult, because some tags, some people don't have tags, some people have improper tags. There's, there's a whole variable there, 30-day tags, different things like that, that we might not be able to track. Obviously, I think there's the thought process of, you, could you use maybe a gate? I'm sure that that's something that you guys have discussed with a permanent barcode for residents. And then if you have the parking attendant on top of that, so there's just a lot of variables that obviously we would love to get out of writing parking tickets for 27 calls per weekend down there. But it's just a difficult variable to make sure that you're doing what we need for the residents, but also making sure that we're enforcing it the best way possible for everybody. So I, I, I know that's not a clear answer, but I think that that'd be difficult for us just to say, we're getting rid of parking tickets, or parking decals, because I think that would put a big burden on the law enforcement, which we already have a big burden. I don't know if it'd be less or more.
So one thing to keep in mind, it's a big issue this year, because this is sticker renewal time.
Right.
So the stickers are good for the next, for this year, plus, plus two more years. We could definitely look into, is there, is there other ways to get them stickers, especially, I mean, we've probably got, well, in normal years, we've, we've got about a month and a half to two months left, and the season, so to speak, is over.
Right.
Obviously, with not knowing what's going to happen this fall and everything else, you know, that season may, I mean, it's, it's nice weather until mid to late October around here, so it could stretch on a little longer. We can definitely, I, I'd like to talk to Diana some, because she's the one directly involved with the stickers.
That's a good idea.
Pick her brain and see what ideas she may have on a, on a, maybe a more convenient delivery system. Obviously, we want to get City Hall reopened sooner rather than later. Yeah, pre-COVID, we were actually open at 7:30, 7:30 to, to 5:00. So we, trying to give people that opportunity to get in ahead of time. Yeah, we had planned on, yeah, doing like a, a mobile City Hall during Fall Festival.
Right.
We still got to figure out what, what's going to happen with Fall Festival in October, so. But yeah, we can definitely research, you know, what is, is there other things that we can do? You know, the mailing people have been extremely appreciative of, because I think this is the first time we've ever done that.
That's how mine came this year.
And it's been, it's gone over very, very well, and really hasn't cost us a whole lot.
Yeah.
When you get down to it. It actually cost us more to put them in, just to just put two in the utility bills than it, than it did to just, we'll just mail them, because we had to get the roll to the company, the billing company in Columbia. It was a nightmare. So, yeah, we've definitely made improvements, but definitely see your point. Let us have some conversation with Diana and see what we can do there, to see how we can make that better. I don't disagree with Chief on eliminating the decals. I think that may cause more issues or concerns coming from our residents than it would be trying to figure things out. I think the attendant's a good step. And yeah, Joey, I agree. I think they, they could do the, the resident decals, for sure.
Another point with the decal part is you have people who live in two different states and might not, might have their car in New York six months and here six months, and I know that there's a whole, but 90 days or however long, 45 days before they get it, and then we're writing them tickets, a lot of complaints, so that, I know there's other resolutions, but I'm not sure which one's the best one.
Chief, one more question for you before you have a seat about this. They, we were, they had brought up the flashing sign. I know in your research indicated that there wasn't necessarily a speeding issue happening there. To give you a little bit of feedback, and I'm just talking about a personal experience, so when you had it on Shoreline, for example, I live on that street, and so here I come, going faster than I should up the road, and I see the sign coming, and I automatically like, pull back, right? So I'm wondering if it is still a deterrent. Now, I don't know if it, long-term, if that deterrent continues to work, right? So if it's there for a short amount of time, you notice it, but if it's there every day, then it just becomes another sign.
It becomes normal, yep.
So something to think about. I know we've kind of talked about potentially ordering a couple more so that we can place them throughout the city a little bit easier. And then the other thing that they had brought up to me, the Windjammer folks, was cameras at the, at the park itself. I don't know if that would help you, or maybe once you get dispatched, that could be something that they could, if we have a park attendant, then we might not need it, but something that they could monitor, like off-screen, on another screen or something. I don't know. Just something to think about.
So we currently have a camera that we do use at Windjammer right now.
Okay.
But it, again, has some visibility, because there's so much tree line.
Right.
Brush, different things around there, that we only see a very small portion, which we've tried to make that, the parking lot portion, to monitor when we're having major parking issues. Right now, that's not monitored 24/7, so that's one of the things with that. Second, with the speeding, just, I'm not saying there's not a speeding issue. I never said there's not a speeding. I think there's speeding issues on every single street throughout every community, everywhere.
Yeah.
We just, when we do monitor those, we have noticed that there is, what we do is we take the 85 percentile and the average, and we look at those, and it showed that we have not had a major issue.
Right.
Are there occurrences? Yes. And will a speed sign there all the time become, for the residents, it will become the norm?
Right.
For the people coming in that aren't at the park every day, then yes, it might bring some attention. So there's some good and bad that can come from that as well, and that's why we usually change it through locations to monitor it and probably keep it, you know, we take it back to Windjammer when we can.
Yep, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Can I make a suggestion to council? It's, it's after 9 o'clock, and our budget workshop has turned into a parking sticker regulation discussion. So I'm, I'm looking for some suggestions here. How can we speed this up? Can, if you have questions, can we give each council member 10 minutes to make your, your questions? Or, because otherwise, I think we might be here till 11 o'clock.
Can we just go through these, like, let's go through volunteer, volunteerism, and then just ask council, are there any questions or concerns regarding that? Then we can move on to the next section, facilitation of civil, civic engagement. Okay. Now, let's talk about that.
Do you have questions in each section?
Probably.
Well, how about if I just give you your 10 minutes and you just go through it, and then what the, the issues that you have, you can ask.
Okay, that's fine.
Were you, I'm sorry, are you finished?
I had a couple more, but that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. The update the procurement policy, so that's kind of on us, that's CR 122.2. Is there a way, Mayor, maybe we could get that added to like, the August or September council meeting?
Say that one again.
It's the update the procurement policy. We had talked about, update the procurement policy, sorry. We had talked about doing it.
Yeah, who had that?
That's me.
Okay. If, if, yeah, if you've got, send that around to, I'm happy to put it on the, put it on the agenda.
Okay. The mixed-use rewrite that we're working on already with Susan and the COG, so that's ST 23.3. The public art ordinance that we had done the ordinance for, but we hadn't discussed how to budget it. That's ST 25.1. We had talked about yesterday, and this isn't, doesn't have to be written in stone, just an idea, is using 1% of the capital, capital projects. So like, if. Yeah, so like, if a capital project could be, let's say that crosswalk and our contribution is $12,000, right? Maybe 1,200 of that gets put into the public art fund for when we need to.
So we would, so if we had a match for that, y'all would consider that as a capital project? We would earmark 1% of that for public art? Is that what I'm understanding?
Potentially, and that doesn't have to be that way. That was just a suggestion that we had. So if there is a better way to fund it, we're definitely all ears. One of the things that wasn't on there was an evaluation of stormwater ordinance and establishment of corrective action. So kind of around the discussion we were having tonight, maybe it looks like we look at it pre-construction and then post-construction for new developments to determine, you know, was there any fault of the developer? Windhaven Commercial and Gama, and we've kind of already taken care of that by approving the economic development plan for the commercial, whatever that's called. Yep. The Walmart Roundabout Improvement, so that's CR 120 1.9. I don't know what we want to do there. I think there's, there is a range there, but maybe we could look at that. And tying that into something that wasn't on here was the Stonecrest median plan that I know Tim was working with, you and Serenity Point.
He's actually working on landscape plans for both of us.
Awesome, perfect. And then this is, again, a wish list item, but just, it's on my list. Stonecrest Boulevard Lighting, CR 120 1.10. So those are the main ones. The other, only other thing that I had on here was when we moved, when we built the new police station, the old police station became kind of more like offices and, and area for some of our public work staff. Have they all moved over there, or are they still?
Yes, y'all have moved out of the other building. Yes, so they moved out of the other building.
So we don't have anybody down at like, the maintenance, what's, who, who, is anybody like, by the lower tennis courts? Is there anybody still?
Our mechanics are still there.
Mechanics are still there, okay. All right. I just didn't know if we could.
As far as cleaning up around the outside of maintenance area?
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, that, got you. No, that, that is, that is not a budgetary item, but just a, got to get the manpower all here at the same time, and projects caught up on, and that focus there, but that is in process. I think y'all just moved into the other, to the new ops place, what, within the last two to three weeks? Okay, so that, that process is, it, it got postponed, and now has basically hit completion. Now they've got the material yard and things like that to work through, so brighter days ahead down at the lower tennis courts as far as the maintenance yard.
Cool. My last and final comment was just some of the customer relations ones that you guys put together. Like, Tom, the developmental services one, provide technical assistance to elderly residents, awesome. Fire department, perform risk assessment to identify neighborhoods, awesome. There's just several of those that were like, really above and beyond, and I think residents are really going to love them. I don't, I won't go into any more detail, but just, those are really spot-on, and so keep up the great work on, on those. That was it. I'm done. Okay, sorry.
Alicia, you want?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, so mine isn't as organized as Heather's, so. I think she covered some of them too, so I won't have to go through everything. Okay, so I think that everything for that first section volunteerism, we're good there. Some of my comments were, again, just related to performance measurement that we've already gone over. Facilitation of civic engagement. For this one, so I guess this is a comment overall, some things, I wasn't really sure at, if this is, if any of the funding associated it, associated with some of these is a new request, or something that's already funded in the budget. And so like, as we're thinking about, you know, what our priorities are, it'd be good to know, is this something above and beyond what we're already doing, and that's already budgeted for? Is this an additional increase to what we already have budgeted for that item? You know, or is this totally already funded in the budget, so that we don't have to, like, it's not?
Yeah, yeah, they were in our notes. Yeah, these are the notes that we took, and I sent them to Charlie.
Oh, okay, so you said that comment?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, um, let's see. The next one. The one regarding, and I don't, and I, I don't remember exactly everything that we put in the memo to.
If you said it, I typed it, so it's probably in there.
So just regarding the volunteer yoga instructors?
Yes.
Volunteer versus paid?
I believe that's in there.
Okay.
Yep, it is.
Okay. Concerts, is there any way for us to make money off of these, like, get sponsorships for the bands instead of playing out of pocket?
It's in there.
Okay.
Yep, that's in there.
Love the idea about the new offerings, like movie on the, movies on the lake and the river floating. My one comment about that is just, you know, are there additional liabilities? And, and would those create costs? Because the, for the, for the estimated cost is just staff time. So that was just, you know, just a point.
I think on that one in specific, it was to investigate the possibilities of it, wasn't, what was the number on that one? Do you have that?
ST 22.6.
22.6. Yeah, so right now, it's just investigating what those events would be. Was, was the initiative there? So a subsequent initiative, once that's reported back, you know, whether it's part of the budgetary process or what have you, or maybe we've got a sponsor that's going to fund it, the subsequent would be to actually have those things. I think what, and Joey, this was, this was under yours, but this is really more just trying to identify what new events we could potentially do, is that correct?
Okay, sounds good. Let's see here. 22.9. Yep, okay, that one's covered there. One question I had, written on the bottom of this page too, was just a follow-up from last year. I know that last year, we changed the tree permit process so that there's no longer a fee associated, and I just put a note to ask, how have the revisions to that process impacted, you know, staff's availability? Like, you know, are we getting a ton of them, or people are not even going through the process anymore? You know, and you don't have to answer now, because I know we want to keep going, but that was just, just a thought as we were going through this.
I can tell you, we're getting a lot more, but I think that has more to do with the fact that there's just a lot of people home doing a lot of improvements, so to speak.
Yeah, cool. Okay, the next section, the liaison, did you put that? Okay. So one thing that we talked a bit about was the, the TK Connect program.
Yeah, y'all had that in the notes, yep. I remember reading.
See, it's hard to.
Yes, it's in there, it's right here.
Okay. So just some suggestions around that, you know, are there opportunities to have the liaison serve terms? You know, are there, are there opportunities for them to engage more? Can we budget, you know, to make them more effective? Are there certain things or events that they could hold in the area to achieve some of those goals that originally were in the comp, comp plan that created that organization? But just, you know, making sure that we've got fresh eyes on that and continue to make it. But just, you know, making sure that we've got fresh eyes on that and continue to make it a valuable time for folks that are volunteering there. Heather covered, um, cleaning up the, the maintenance facility area. And esp- and we mentioned this with the white goods as well, those being just kind of thrown around over there in the, in the driveway, if there's any way to just make it look, there's a, you know, look better. There's a lot of people who are going down there to use tennis courts, pickleball, and we certainly don't want them to feel like they're going through, like, you know.
Maintenance yard.
A maintenance yard, yeah. Thank you, and, and unfortunately, even, yeah, even behind the facility, because the, the trail is right there that looks down on the facility.
On the golf maintenance side, we can definitely address that with the golf maintenance folks.
Yeah, we could, we could make Etsy projects out of those. Uh, let's see if we covered this one, 4.2, include coverage, okay, yep. So regarding the weekly newsletter, coverage of upcoming topics on, on the council meeting agenda and the planning commission, so that folks are aware of what we're talking about before we talk about it, that would be great, and that doesn't cost any money. Okay, sorry, I'm trying to go fast.
Take your time.
Okay, 4.20, 4.5, this one, our, um, I'm so glad our fire chief is here. So I, I would like some clarity on this item specifically. I wasn't quite following the description in terms of, is it a part-time position, a, a new part-time position, are we? Could you just give us just a, a quick overview of what this position is and, um, and what, and, and then specifically, what type of public interactions are we, like, getting that's creating the significant need for a new resource?
Actually, what it is, we've, we've taken, we had an admin captain for, for a long time. It was 30 hours a week, and what we did, because of the need, uh, we've had some specific needs with software and data tracking that we've been trying to do, so we split those hours. So the admin captain is there for two days, 15 hours, and the admin assistant is there for two days. So we just split the hours, this existing money's, it's already there. We just have a lot more things that we're trying to track and do that we needed that person for.
Okay, so this isn't any new budget request, it's not adding to the FTE count?
No, it's, it's exactly the same, we're just using the same hours, we're splitting the hours and doing two different things with it.
Okay, and just to that point too, like, because I, I read in here, um, to enhance customer information and access, fire department will utilize a part-time admin assistant to increase community access, so.
Have somebody in the lobby, we don't have anybody, we haven't had anybody in the lobby, so if the firefighters are out, if we're out doing whatever the task is, there's not always been someone there.
Okay.
So this person will be there, and we know that at some point, probably next year, that will, our admin captain will retire. And when he does, that person will increase those hours and just absorb all of those hours. That's what the goal is, it's a phased approach.
Okay. Do you guys have a lot of people, like, foot traffic coming in and out of the, the station?
Pre-COVID, we did. Things, things have slowed down a lot, and we've got a great big stop sign on our front door that says, you know, we're not open to the public. But, you know, we are open to the public, we're trying to answer any questions we can, but we are trying to keep our building closed and clean.
Okay, and that, does that happen at both stations?
Not as much at two as it does at one. Uh, one's our headquarters station, pretty much, that's where my office is, and our operations captain, Kevin Daley's office is. So we do have a lot of foot traffic in and out, a lot of vendors and that, so we need that person, a face at the front door.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
You're welcome.
So much, okay. I think the next one is probably on there. Um, okay, going into promoting branding the city. Again, I know that we, Heather mentioned this, um, putting, adding an ordinance, perhaps it's to our budget ordinance that allocates 1% of capital, um, funding towards public, a public art fund that we can then allocate to certain projects. It might not necessarily be the specific project that that funding is identified or originally pulled from, but it's, we're creating a pool that we can then, it builds, it builds, and then we can do some more cool or unique things in the future.
Just as an idea, maybe to think about, um, typically when we have to do those capital projects, uh, whether it's a, a match, yeah, I, I have to bring that to y'all to approve those funds, you could capture it in part of the motion per project. You know, motion to approve or to award this bid to this contractor for Project X, and to also include 1% or whatever it is for, you know, to go into the public art fund or something like that. I mean, if you didn't want to have it specifically tied, you know, whether it's amended and put into your, the public arts ordinance that y'all adopted, or to put it into the budget ordinance every year, you could almost do it, um, as you went along per project, as you approved those things as part of your motion, um, if you wanted to. Now, obviously that works while the five of y'all are on council, as councils rotate off, yeah. But then again, as councils rotate off, they can repeal the ordinance system, so, I mean.
I mean, I think having a standalone ordinance, or, or even it just being an, um, an item in the, that's specified in the budget every year. You know, really gives it more, more meat and more emphasis, um, and, and probably would help it carry on versus if it was something project by project that was looked at.
Okay.
Not that it wouldn't be looked at project by project anyways from a, just a dollar standpoint, but.
Sure.
That would be my recommendation, of course, it's up to all of council. Okay. So a couple just notes, like, whenever there's something on here, um, that seemed like a, a regular operational thing that we would do, how does that, how was that determined, like, that this item specifically would go on here? So for example, ST 25.4.
5.4, okay.
Like, you know, creating an online calendar, um, I was just, like, that just seems like, um, not necessarily a strategy, but.
Right, so it's, it's not something that we have been doing, so it was something new that Joey was adding, uh, to further promote, you know, our, our, not just our programs, but the city and our offerings. But, I mean, if, if things like that, y'all, you know, think, ah, you know, that's just operational, just do it kind of thing. We don't necessarily have to capture it on, in, in this document, we're trying to, yeah. A lot of those things got pulled off before y'all, y'all got to see it, but, um, you know, some of them, because they were new. I know Katie had worked, worked, worked with department heads, okay, well, that's something new, what are we doing with that? Why are we doing it? Okay, where's a good spot for it, so.
Okay, cool. Uh, okay, the next couple of questions are captured in our notes, so I won't go over those, but those are just regarding the software, the software requests, and just helping us to understand, you know, what's the difference between some of these? I, I looked up the IOPS 360, and it looks like it has some, um, of the training functionality, so just helping us understand a little bit more of what, what we're getting for the money, so that we can prioritize and justify the expense. Uh, some questions around the IT. Um, just some questions around, you know, the expenses, the $4,000, is this an annual expense, is this operating? I'm sorry, is this an ongoing expense, is this a one-time capital expense?
Okay.
That was one question I had, and like, you know, just from a redundancy standpoint, we're taking the servers. I've read it as it's taking servers, city servers offsite to be hosted virtual or network.
Correct. We're just, well, we're, we're moving more of our server storage instead of it being in physical servers located at City Hall. They are, uh, we're moving them more into that virtual cloud, um, with backed up redundancies. To decrease, I mean, because when the servers go down, it is a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah.
It is not fun.
Okay. Made a note for the, um, the crosswalks on that one. Just a question, should we set aside additional funding for second and third systems? But that might be something that we just apply for every year, um, but just made a note there. And then, looking at some of the other crosswalks, are there opportunities to do, like, a, paint the crosswalk, design or something like that to, to draw attention to the different sidewalk, or, sorry, the different crosswalks that we have on TK Drive that might not, we might not have funding for, but just need some safety enhancements?
So the, the, the ones on TK Drive have to have that white pattern on it, DOT specifies that. That it has to be, now, the, the, the cross brick in it, the, the brick color in it, they don't care about that. Yeah, okay, you can do that, but the white, the limiter lines and the white crossing, it has to be those sizes in those spots. Uh, that's part of the, um, uh, part of their, uh, in their manual is specified that way.
Okay, oh, that was something.
Now, the other ones in the city that are on city-owned streets, you know, where you've got golf cart crossings or various crosswalks, you know, that kind of thing. Now, that, that totally up, totally up to us.
Sounds good. Uh, the request for the $62,000 for the parking, additional 100 parking, is that the half that we're in conversations with? Would that be our half, or is that the total and what we're looking at?
So that was one quote we got from one contractor that happened to be working in Lakewood. Duke had a conference call with us. Friday, Thursday? Thursday? So they were, we'll manage the project, because that way we can capitalize it, and then we'll invoice you for your half and blah, blah, blah. Let us get some quotes. Their cheapest quote was $232,000. We're like, so let's go back and look at this again and try to get it closer to the quote we got, but they were going through just a handful of their already approved contractors, um, so we're still working with that. They don't anticipate getting the FERC approval for us to even do it until mid to late September. So, um, I'm using their scope, uh, be having meetings with Tim tomorrow. By the way, Tim, I didn't have a chance to tell him today, um, just to go through that. Uh, I got that scope from them that they used for their quotes, uh, Friday afternoon. So we're, we're going to try to nail that down, but that 62 represented the, the full amount for, from the contractor.
So that'd be $31,000 of new?
If that's the one that was used, correct.
Funding we would have to come up with, okay.
And my recommendation would be that we use Cataba Park money, because this isn't just putting gravel underneath the lines, it's actual, it would be the stone base for what would eventually be a paved parking lot in the Cataba Park design.
Okay. Sounds good. Again, really like the, um, CR 21.1.21. Also, the, uh, 22.2, ensuring best practices, city will update procurement policy, that's on my list.
Which one was that one?
The, uh, updating the procurement policy. Um, and then 22.4. Uh, the development services one, um, supporting, supportive of that. For 2.22.7, the $64,000, is that, does that cover new, a new position or new infrastructure? Or is that, what's the $64,000 for?
Chief, this is the confined space equipment, you mind coming up and talking on that? Yeah, and it's equipment, it's not personnel.
Okay, it's equipment?
It's actually in this budget year, hopefully with COVID, we'll get to run it. Uh, the anticipated run date of that's in September, so we're still waiting to see. The academy just started releasing classes to us, so hopefully it'll run.
Okay, so this isn't anything that's a new request, this is something already in the budget? Cool, awesome, that's $64,000 less that we have to find.
Exactly.
Right, okay, uh, let's see. With some of the position, or with some of the requests on, um, new vehicles, like the street sweeper, additional leaf collection truck, these all, some of these seem to be additional vehicles, and so one question just is around with the purchase of new vehicles versus replacement of existing vehicles, do, do we need, do those come with new people? Like, how do we, if we don't?
For LEFAC, since Tim's driving the audio visual here, for LEFAC, um, yes, potentially. I mean, right now, we're still short two, uh, FTEs in, um, Public Works, um, two open positions, trying to get those filled. So we'd have to, at a minimum, we'd have to get those filled to be able to do that. Yeah, and yeah, it's, that would not be a replacement, on the street sweeper, no, because that's something that would be used more periodically during non-leaf season, that type thing, uh, on an as-needed kind of basis, uh, to help keep debris and everything, getting in the storm drains, that type. Also keeping, you know, the roads looking nice. But yeah, the, the additional LEFAC, without getting those two positions full, yeah, we got nobody that could really run it. With those two positions full, maybe, um, wouldn't need one. But, yeah, we've been shorthanded in Public Works for, I mean, we haven't had a full staff there in over three years. I mean, you, you get full staff and then somebody leaves, or, you know, things like that, so it's, it's been a, it's been a transition. And that's, that's the case pretty much anywhere, but, um, that's, when you can make an extra 25 cents an hour, they, they leave, um, for whatever reason, so, um, so yeah, not all the vehicles would require, um, additional staff. Uh, some of it's just to make what current staff is doing more efficient.
Let's see. For 2.1, CR I 22.11, uh, regarding the training certification, so it's $2,000 per member initially. So my question just around that, and I know it's not until 2022, so that's kind of far out, but after I made, I'll just make the comment. You know, with the training, is there like travel involved, or is, is this going to be like a, you know, once you send your whole team there? You don't have to answer it now, it's just something to think about, um, you know, making sure that we're capturing the whole impact of, of that training, if it is an additional request above and beyond what we currently have budgeted. Uh, I love the 21.3, uh, 23.3. Did you write in here about the water bottles?
Mm-hmm.
So that's covered. On, um, let's see, it's page eight, I'm skipping now, I'm moving forward quicker. So on page eight, uh, cus, CUST 21.29, oh, sorry, it's the one above that, 1.28. When we're looking at that $65,000 to have the, um, customers to be able to see their usage, that would be actually most likely incorporated into water bills, is that right?
It's not something that we would, I mean, it's, it would be an expense that we would incur. Hopefully it wouldn't be an expense that would necessarily require a rate increase, uh, but it's an all or nothing thing. It's not a, hey, this, you know, Mr. Smith wants it, but, you know, Ms. Doe doesn't. Yeah, if we do it, it's, it's all in. Now, the first year has, uh, some additional cost, um, that you don't have, but you do have some ongoing costs. But the first year is obviously the most expensive with getting all that built out and put in, put in place. And then you just got your annual maintenance costs after that.
So is the $65,000 that's listed there, is that able to be absorbed in the current budget? Or would this require a rate increase?
In, in our current budget this year, no, it, it won't, it, it can't happen.
Okay, so how would this $65,000, if we were to do that, that would?
That is what we're looking at for the coming, for the 2021 fiscal year, to see if that fits. Obviously, I, my opinion, I, I would not spend this $65,000 if it required any type of rate increase.
Right.
Because I think there are very, very few people that are going to use it.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had on there, um, some additional requests. I know that we've had some conversations around this in the past, but if there's a way to have our council. Um, I know that we've had some conversations around this in the past, but, um, if there's a way to have our council meetings be stre- streamed live on social media, um, I'm not sure what technology, software would be required in order to do that, uh, but that was one thing that I was hoping that we could look into. Uh, lighting on Stonecrest is already in here, uh, Windjammer Park. I don't know, I don't think that this would require a significant budget impact, but getting back on our calendars, the annual council retreat, I think it's really important that we get together on a yearly basis, talk about what our plans are, what we want to accomplish throughout the year. Um, and that dialogue certainly, uh, I think, could be helpful for council relations. Um, see, that was mentioned. Uh, business license website, I think Heather, you might have mentioned that on your list. Is that, that one was on there, the business license process?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't mention it, but it is on my, like, other list.
Okay, so just, um, this one is related to either simplifying or, or finding a way that someone can look online and, and understand what the process is and how it would impact them, or what their business license fees would be. I know that this has been a, a, a challenge, but maybe there's, you know, some sort of restructuring that might need to be looked at, maybe that's something we could just put on next year's council, council plan, um, because it, it is complicated, and, you know, when you're dealing with a vendor that's never a contractor, that's never worked in TK, and you say, hey, go get this license so I can use you, they're just like, huh, like, what, what's going on?
I think the most complicated part of it, and Tom, you, you're involved with it a good bit with Barbie, is really them figuring out where they are as far as NICS code. Most of them have no clue.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we can put the rate sheet up, online, but there's calculations that have to be done based on their gross revenue and things like that, and
Yeah.
really, the, the hardest part is, okay, what is it that you do so we can, we, then, most contractors are gonna look, or, not even contractors, most business owners, they have no idea what the NICS code is, and don't even realize that it's assigned to them by the IRS.
Yeah.
You know, it's on their tax filings, on their tax returns, because that's where we get it from, that's probably the, the hardest part, is them figuring out whether they're a one hundred, or a four hundred, or a five hundred, so then they can look at their rates and things like that. Now, we have simplified the process in that we're not asking them upfront for all kinds of backup documentation. What'd you make last year, yeah, that's on the application form, okay, great. Now, if we start seeing huge discrepancies, like, oh, for five years, you were doing, I don't know, a million dollars, and all of a sudden, now you're telling us you did a hundred thousand dollars, what happened?
Yeah.
Because we still have the right to go, eh, to audit their books, you know, things like that if we need to, so we've tried to make it as streamlined as we can. Municipal Association is supposed to be coming out with a web portal, uh, is what Scott Slatten had told me, where people, because they're trying to unify, so to speak, to where they can actually do the online version. MASK is supposed to be coming out with that, I have not seen it yet, though.
Okay, yeah, I think if we can even just look at it from that, I mean, what, maybe we wait till they come out, or maybe we just take a look at it and think, think, is, how do we make this more customer-friendly, yeah.
Okay.
Um, uh, I think this was mentioned in here, but in, in terms of doing almost like a how are we doing survey, um, that's, I think it's handed out, but I've seen oftentimes people have it electronically, automatically in their email, um, response. And so I just noted that might be something that, um, would serve that purpose without you having to physically think about, you know, sending a contact form or follow-up form out or anything like that. Um, one thing would be great for us to look into is creating an ethics reporting line that would be managed by a third party. And then also ethics training for staff. Uh, another thing, um, media or public relations training was something that might be good, just given that there's been so much attention on our city lately. I think that that could.
Sorry, I was, I was saying, what was that last one?
Um, media training slash public relations. Um, another thing, uh, there's the water, water system education brochure or PDF or something, I think we've, I've mentioned before, getting something like that out for folks, um, inspector education collateral, which I think you cover that in one of your items as well that gets at that. And then landscaping plan for Stonecrest. Um, one other thing is, uh, finding an opportunity to help streamline some of, and I guess the sun, sorry to get to David's point too, from earlier in terms of tracking some of the issues that, or, you know, that come up, is, um, one thing is, and I know I've mentioned this to you before too, is a, almost like a follow-up, a council manager memo to city council that says, you know, these are some of the upcoming things that are happening throughout the city that we, you know, we want to make you aware of. Great example would be, um, hey, we're about to take down twenty trees on, you know, TK Drive median, that's gonna happen over the next two weeks, you know, hear some information about that, you'll see it, you'll probably hear about it. You know, some, um, opportunities to just, um, provide counsel with some information about what's going on on some of the, those other levels. You know, events and things like that that are coming up that might be important or that you might want to highlight. And then maybe that will, um, reduce the amount of emails on a weekly base, or on a daily basis, and they could, some of that information can be put in that memo instead. Did I cover it all? Okay, I think that's all I have for now, but thank you guys so much, because this was really helpful for me to go through and have some dialogue around and just think through things, and, um, I really appreciate the amount of effort that you all put in it, and I really took the time to, to look at it, to study it, to think it through, um, and, and as a measure of respect to the amount of time and effort you all put in it, that it, we did read it, and we did think about it, and, um, wanted to provide just some, some thoughtful input. Thank you.
Gus?
First, I want to say thanks to, uh, staff, all of you here and not here for all your hard work. Um, that's a lot to go into it, um, I've only got questions on a hundred and six of these, so, um, it won't be much longer. Um, no, I'm looking forward to our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar path joining my neighborhood in Heather's and the sixty thousand dollar lighted median on Stonecrest, we can light up the holly bushes as we replace all those dying trees. Um, I, I did have one question about one thing, or maybe one suggestion, uh, it's, i- if we decide to budget, um, there's a mention on here about landscaping the traffic circle at Walmart, which would be kind of hard considering it's in the middle of the road. I think that'd be a good location for, um, use of our public art policy, I think it'd be a, and I mean, for visibility purposes, for everything else, I would feel like there would be something that could be put there, or commissioned to be put there, um, if we choose to budget it, that, uh, would be better than landscaping, just a thought.
We think like a statue of some time?
Watch out. Yeah. We need a tribute to David, um, honestly, guys, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna agree with the mayor. Um, my, my priorities for this year, I, look, I, Charlie, I told you today, I, I'm concerned about the economy and, you know, COVID-related complications that would cause us, for some of our revenue sources not to be what they're supposed to be. So I'm really looking at, um, Catawba Park, I, I mean, if there's some way that we can find a way to get that budgeted and get phase one started, as we were talking about earlier, great, and I do feel like we need to take care of the concerns we have at Windjammer and Catawba and Pit Karen, and I'd like to find a creative way to fund that, and I think we've got a couple of good suggestions out there already, um, to alleviate those concerns and not to have to pull money from uh, another project, um, and obviously not ever raise taxes, so really, that's about all I got. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna keep you here for another hour while I, 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 I mean, Catawba Park is, is it for me.
Right, and before we close, are there any other final chance for anybody want to make any comments? Charlie, you got any final comments before we close it?
Um, no, thank y'all for, um, very thorough, uh, appreciate the input, took a lot of notes, I'm sure staff did as well. Um, yeah, maybe just to tag team on something that, that Gus just mentioned, um, I'll be honest, I, I don't think any of us, uh, whether it's at the local level, state level, or federal level, have any idea what this fall, winter, you know, the first six months of our fiscal year is gonna look like, uh, from a financial standpoint. It could be amazing, or it could be absolutely horrific. Yeah, conversation I had, uh, this afternoon with Bob Barkin, um, you know, I don't want to take anything away from our meeting on July thirtieth, um, but I'd, I would encourage us to, to be very cautious, maybe keep a, a wish list of, okay, here, here's the things that we want to do, and here's the order we want to do them in, let's keep everything status quo, and let's see, yeah, and, and add things in as we go, kind of thing, uh, versus having to remove things, I think it's much easier to add, uh, as, as we go along and, and are able to track where the revenue's at. Yeah, I mean, and really, that's, that's concern, I think staff does an amazing job with our expenses, uh, managing the budgets and doing, doing a great job there. It's, it's the revenues that, that we really don't have a whole lot of control over, especially with our budgets. That's, that, I mean, I, I understand a hundred percent, um, yeah, right now, it looks like H-Tax is rebounding, you know, permits are picking back up, and it's, all right, great, but Lord come November, who knows? Yeah, and that's, that's where I'm, I'm nervous, um, you know, am I scared to death? No, uh, people are still gonna pay their property taxes, yeah, I guess that's the one good time that, you know, we're majority residential, uh, tax base, but, you know, we haven't seen businesses close yet, and I really hope we don't, but, um, those, those could have lasting impacts, so. I, we definitely, um, and staff's heard me say this, we definitely want to be extremely cautious, uh, as we, as we go into twenty-twenty-one, and you know, as we hit the spring of twenty-twenty-one, maybe things are looking great, um, maybe there's a vaccine and businesses are going great and everything's wonderful, and okay, well, here are the first five things that we're adding back in, you know, that we, we want to see done, yeah, and then we, and then we start tackling those things. I know it would definitely help, um, our finance director's heart, doing it that way, but, um, no, he's, uh, but, you know, we're, obviously, we're gonna follow y'all's direction, um, and I'm very excited about the July thirtieth, uh, workshop with you guys here in two weeks, I think it's gonna be really good, and, um, it's always good to start a, start a new budget year and, and start anew, so, thank y'all for your time on this one.
All right, we'll close that, and, uh, you didn't have it on here, city manager comments, do you want any?
I figured we were gonna be long enough, y'all didn't want to hear from me anymore.
Anybody want to make any council comments, or are we pretty done, go ahead, Alicia, you want to make some?
Stay safe.
Motion to adjourn, that's my comment.
Second, I have a motion and a second, all in favor of Sigma Phi by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, no, I'm just kidding.